We'd like to welcome everybody to this October 6th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, if you would, join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us today as we do the business of the city in New Bern, do those things that would be pleasing to Thee and in the best service to our citizens. And we really ask for a special prayer today for our fellow Alderman, Alderwoman, Jamisha Harris. We just ask for her speedy recovery and all things we know are in your hands. In your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ma'am clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Dingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Pregnant.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
President.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, this time, before we get going, I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Mark Stevens for this workshop. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's amazing how quickly the season has come for us to evaluate and see where we are as far as an update on our financial situation. You recall during the budget season, it was my recommendation that we adopt the budget that was presented to you all and then ultimately see how things were going with the uncertainties that lay ahead for us during the COVID era. So quickly, we have arrived at this point here in October for this financial workshop for us to take a look and see where we are to date. And that's what this presentation will cover. As we'll see in the outline, there are several different things that I want to kind of lead up to before we kind of really get into the financial update. I think it's probably prudent for us to go through a FEMA update just to see where we are on our expenditures and revenues, reimbursements that is, to date, based on the losses that we had here in Hurricane Florence. And then we'll get into the financial update. We'll look at where our revenues are actually versus where we have projected or budgeted of those, our expenditures to date versus the budget, and then go through some of our personnel and capital requests that our departments submitted during the budget process that we held off on, especially those with capital requests and also personnel-related requests. So we'll go through those real quickly as well. And then we have two items which the board requested that staff bring back before them at this workshop because they were rather large, costly items, one being the City Hall Annex project and the other being the Race Track Road project. So those are some large capital projects that we've kind of, I guess, put a pin in and kept up on the board that ultimately we kind of wanted to see where we were with our financials here in October after going through some of this COVID period. So let's go ahead and start. We'll start. We've got a PowerPoint before you today, so the public bill followed along as well for those who are watching online and on our CTV3 channel. So kind of give an update as to where we are. So let's start first with the FEMA update. What you'll see here is our actual expenditures to date. So as you can see, I'm going to talk in these large numbers. As you can see, it's kind of broken down by funds, but the large numbers down at the bottom, you'll see Hurricane Florence was a $15.5 million storm for us. That was what our exposure was, that's what our expenses were, both in personnel-related losses, overtime, financial losses that we had due to buildings that were damaged, anything, debris removal, the contracts that we had to repair things, all that kind of stuff. So enterprise funds is obviously to restore services, whether that was electric, water, sewer, whatever we had. So as you'll see, that total number was about $15.5 million. A lot of that, a good bit of it, has been reimbursed. FEMA reimbursements to date that we've received is a little over $9 million. We've also had our insurance proceeds, which is about $2.1 million. So that totals up to be about $11.15 million that we have received out of the $15.5 back. So obviously, that leaves about $4.8 remaining that's estimated as reimbursements. We'll get into a little bit more detail on the next slide here. This kind of looks at more of what is our overall FEMA projects obligated that have been approved by FEMA. We have left what reimbursements we've received to date and the remaining obligations. So this is kind of the moving forward kind of part of FEMA. The one we just looked at was what was our initial exposure. So I'll go back to it real quick. What was our initial exposure? What reimbursements have we received? What insurance proceeds have we received? And the 4.8 that you see is stuff that we're still working through that we anticipate receiving as well. What you see here on this is the projects that have been obligated. That means that funds been set aside by FEMA to pay out the amounts that are due to the city due to the losses. So as you see there, the general fund, others is 1.9. You've got the Stanley White Recreation Center, which was obligated at 7.5. You've got the drainage ways, $32.8 million. Management costs, which is both for our DRS, Disaster Recovery Services LLC, that is doing most of our consulting work. There's a couple other consultants that we've used. Obviously, Draper Aden has helped us with some of the drainage work as well, so that's included in that. And then you've got the enterprise funds, about $10.8 million with FEMA reimbursements received to date, about 8.3 of that. So the remaining obligations, funding-wise, that FEMA has approved is, that still remains and that's still out there, is about $46 million. Forty million of that, though, is two large projects. And you'll see that right here, the Stanley White Recreation Center, which was about $8 million, the Drainage Ditches, which is $32.8 million, and the BP building, which was about $656, although we're working through some processes. We're hoping that that's going to be more at about a $1.9 million replacement cost for that particular facility going through the 428 process that we are. So as you can see, our exposure's still, going back to that original, back to the last slide here. So as you can see, there's still a lot of work to do. I want y'all, if you will, to put a pin in that $46 million number because obviously that becomes very important as we're moving forward in the future here as far as how we plan or anticipate paying for some of the expenses that we're going to be seeing here in the near future with regards to the ditch work that needs to be done, as well as the Stanley White Recreation Center, and thinking through how we want to financially pay for those and all the different processes that Mary can detail a lot further as far as our debt financing and so forth and so on. Any questions on the FEMA part of the update?
Yes, Mark, I have a question. You're speaking of the BP station. So it will be replaced with a city facility that would be, what would it be replaced with?
Much like the 428 process with, we've gone through, it kind of allows us to, some flexibility about what we want to do. We are in dire need of space because obviously that was used as storage space for a lot of the public works stuff, especially the Christmas decorations and some other things that the public buildings area have used. And so ultimately, we do have some decisions to make on how we want to utilize that. Obviously, just like Stanley White Recreation Center, anytime you make a change and scope of the work that needs to be done, you have to submit, it has to be approved, you know, things like that. But ultimately, it'd be to build back facilities to help out with whatever the city, because ultimately, it's a city building that we were using for storage and other things.
Right, thank you.
But we do have flexibility in what we want to do. Any other questions?
Mark, just very minor, but under the Stanley White, paid by the city, it looks like it's $1,358. That must be some minimal fees, but you haven't subtracted it from, you know, anything else, so I didn't know if that, how are you going to handle that? It's minimal, but I didn't know, is that just for, you know, like fees you've had to pay?
It might have been a mold report or something that we did, just minimal stuff like that. I don't know, Mary, do you have it?
It's just minimal.
Very minimal stuff, you know, in the grand scheme of $55 million.
Understood, understood.
But I think it's for minor works of stuff. All right, so moving on, we'll go to the 2020, 2021 financial update. And so you can kind of see a comparison of our first quarter revenue. So just kind of to lead into this before I get started with the graphs, as you recall, when we went through the budget season, the budget was kind of, you know, we hit March. March was really the kind of the onset of all COVID closure and everything. And we were receiving reports from the North Carolina League of Municipalities and School of Government, folks like that, about projections as far as how we would come about our budget seasons and what to expect. And I think Mary and I both reviewed those and we kind of formulated some budget projections that we both felt comfortable with moving forward, both from an expenditure standpoint, which obviously we had to cut our budgets down some, and also from a revenue standpoint because obviously if the revenues aren't there, then we're going to have a very offset budget that we're going to have to overcome. Initially, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but the initial guidance that we got from the League of Municipalities was for the first quarter of the year that we should expect basically zero revenue as far as the sales tax, because they thought everything was going to be cut down. So they said to be safe, figure about 0%. And then the next quarters, you would go 75 to like 50, and then ultimately back to 100% by the time you reached about the third, fourth quarter of the year. So we kind of, we thought that was a little bit aggressive for us, so we didn't go exactly with that model, but we did go with some kind of reductions. And to a very, you know, it was, obviously, we want to be conservative with regards to our revenues because obviously we need those to offset the expenditures that we're anticipating, otherwise we've got to dive into our fund balance. So looking forward here, I wanted to show y'all some comparisons over the first quarter that we've seen. As you will see, there's three different bars. These three different bars represent 2019, 2020, and 2021 budgets. 2020 was the one that we finished up June 30th last year, last fiscal year, I guess. 2021 is the one we're currently in, 2019 was the one prior to that. So as you can see, our taxes and licenses, we're spot on, actually looking better than we were last year. Government sources, as far as revenues, are straight across the board, about identical to where they have been. The other sources income, you'll see a red line in the 2021 gray bar there. That red line represents where our revenues would be had we not received the Creighton County Coronavirus Relief Funds, $331,000, as well as the fixed asset, 801 Carolina Avenue sale to the Housing Authority of $455,000. So you take away those two large revenue sources that we got, as you can see, we are pretty much in line with where we were for 2020. And then finally, you'll see reimbursements and transfers actually continues to show just that slow growth as we continue to see from year to year, from 19 to 20 to 21. So all in all, everything, it looks very, very good as far as our revenues go.
So the taxes, so the taxes do include our sales taxes?
That is correct. That's sales taxes as we have received them in comparison to previous years.
Okay, but we're still, aren't we like half a year behind? Do we lag about two quarters?
We typically lag by about three months, but those three months also include the three months from April, May, and June, if I'm not mistaken. So that's good because that honestly was the height of the closure period. So in the height of the closure period, we're still showing that good of a situation financially with regards to the taxes and licensures, then we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Mark, question. I thought we were supposed to receive about $400,000, almost $500,000 from Creighton County for the COVID relief fund. I think it was like $497,000. What happened with that?
Yeah, that's great. Mary, you want to touch on that real quick? Probably better for you to sit on the front row, so I'm sure you'll be up and down a little bit. First question?
$497,000 is the correct amount from Creighton County. The number that you just quoted was the money that we're actually getting from CBDG, the Development Services is bringing in. So we're getting two different sources of care.
Yeah, there's multiple sources that are coming in. We've got the CDPG funds that come to Development Services that ultimately will go to help offset utility rent payments and so forth and so on for some of our customers administered through RCS. We're going to be talking about that in upcoming meetings and asking the board's support of that, as well as the other coronavirus relief funds for us to handle internal modifications and expenses that we've had during this COVID period. So two different pots. Any other questions on that? So let's go to expenses. As you can see, we took some pretty significant measures to try to reduce what our expenses are. Our capital outlay, down slightly. Debt service payments pretty much have been somewhat even across the board. Operating costs, obviously you see that reduction. We decided to cut back in our operating costs, decided to keep our personnel costs low as well for 2021. Almost a million, little less than a million dollar reduction in the personnel costs for 2021 versus the 2019. So kind of summing those two charts together into a number, if we were to basically continue throughout this year, barring no major other revenue sources, barring no major other expenses that we would incur, we're looking at about $2.5 million, actually probably 2.2 because the board has spent $175,000 for, what was that, the 175?
Simulator.
The simulator building. So the 175, that's, we're looking at about $2.2 million going into the general fund if things continue to go the way they've been going. Which is good, really good. Just showing as to what we, what we cut out of, so this fiscal year 2021 budget, we had 24 new position requests in the budget that were not approved. So we basically, we basically said, you know what, this COVID period, there's a lot of uncertainty, we're not going to approve any additional requests as far as personnel for the upcoming budget.
Mark, could you go back just to that last page for a second?
Sure.
The capital outlay is up just a little bit. Is that, you know, for 2020, what exactly is the difference in that versus 19 and 21?
Capital outlay is actually down from 2020.
I wonder if that's...
Yeah. Capital outlay is actually down from 2020.
Well, I mean, looking at it, it looks like it's up on 2020.
No, but that's for the fiscal year 2020. We're in fiscal 2021.
Yeah, we're in 2021.
But I'm saying, was that the fire truck purchase, is that what that was?
Last year. Lori is saying that's what it is, that that's going to be the majority of it, but I'd be happy to get you some more details if you want.
No, that's fine.
That's the biggest one I can come up with.
What?
So I want to make sure I understand this. So when we see 2020, that's fiscal year 2020, that these funds would have been spent by June 30, 2020? Correct. So we would have spent those for the fire truck prior, but didn't we spend it after June 30th? About? No, we had to pay for the fire truck when we ordered it. I see, okay. We're just now financing it. Okay. Now figuring out how to pay for it.
And the operating costs, again, for last fiscal year, were up a little bit. Was that anything in particular? I mean, when you show me a graph like that, I'm going to answer your question.
Mayor, I'm sure that we could probably provide you a ton of details on our operating costs, but you know...
Okay, that just looked like a bit of a joke, is all reason I was asking. Continue, go ahead.
Yeah. And it's hard, it's hard to say just from a standpoint of, there are so many things that we do that get encumbered very early on in the year. So oftentimes, those encumbered amounts, we may encumber $100,000 for garage services at, you know, I'm just going to pick one, not trying to pick out somebody, but there may be $100,000 in garage services to Colony entire. We may go ahead and encumber that amount because we know over the course of the year, we're going to have $100,000 in expenses in Colony tire expenses, both in mechanical repairs, as well as tires, or whatever it may be. So a lot of times, the department heads will go ahead and encumber that amount, doesn't mean that it's already spent in that way, but it's encumbered budgetary.
Thank you.
Mark, are you annualizing the FY 2021 numbers, I assume, since we're only a few months into the fiscal year?
This is as of 9/30. Is that correct, Mary?
So...
I probably just need to sit up here.
So we are annual, so when we're making our estimates for the revenues, the 2.5 million in revenue that we're expecting, additional revenue, that's an annual number. The rest of these numbers, every single thing that you're looking at is as of 9/30, so it's the first quarter.
So for the personnel calls, for example, it's just, the 21 number is just slightly below 20. So is that a year-to-date 20 number versus a year-to-date 21 number?
Correct, first quarter versus first quarter. But we wouldn't have hired anybody this first quarter, I'm assuming. I wasn't here this time last year, but I'm assuming first, that, you know, they were hiring people. There were positions approved in the FY 20 budget and they were hired. We haven't done that so far this year. And that, of course, is a lion's share of our operating cost is always staffing.
So as we said, in the budget that was presented to us, or presented to the board, there were 24 new position requests, the majority of which you heard at the retreat in February that the department heads kind of came and gave you a preliminary synopsis of what their budget was going to be. Eight, also eight reclassifications with pay increases, i.e. additional duties or a change in the position going up a grade or two depending on what was needed within the department. So there was quite a bit of requests in the budget that were not approved. As you can see here, this kind of gives you a breakdown of what each one of the department requests were, majority of them obviously in public safety, some in Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and also Development Services. Much of that due to growth that we're starting to see and that all of you have heard about, both good, from a good, good thing and a bad thing, the city's growing. The bad thing is, is it's growing in two different directions. We've got some that's growing out towards the west and we've got some that's growing towards the south. And obviously, that impacts a lot of your services. And then when you talk about development services, any kind of growth that you got, the amount of inspections and construction related to traffic that we're having within the department obviously shows there's a significant amount of inspection requests and contractors, both commercially and residentially, primarily residential right now, is that correct? Yeah. And they do have, they do have some that with the West New Bern project that's going on, those apartment complexes are broken grounds, obviously, commercial inspections out there will become a lot more requested in the future here very soon. Annual salary and benefit costs for proposed positions, so this should give you a pretty good breakdown for what all the full-year costs are if the board were to entertain what those costs would be for the remainder of the year at 70% of the year remains. We just picked a number there of 70%. Obviously, we do it based on how many payrolls were left, but at 70% of the year that remains, you're looking at about a 1.123 million cost over all of the different funds. The majority of the requests for the positions were obviously in the general fund, less than time water, sewer, electric. Their funding requests become a little bit easier with regards to personnel and operating costs, especially like with Charlie, when you're talking about a $50 million budget, you know, one position is a lot easier versus in the general fund, you've got a very significant amount of department requests and they all have to compete against one another. So that becomes a controlling factor somewhat as well. With regards to annual costs for proposed and new reclassified positions, this kind of gives you an idea based on five departments, what the requests are. That kind of, this kind of relates back to the number request, which was here, so five police, eight fire. So you can kind of see what that cost is. And then here's where you see what the impact is to each one's budget. So as you see, fire department requested eight positions, so that's 488,000. You've got police requesting five more additional positions, that's 358,000, so forth and so Now, some of these obviously impact, impact all the different funds depending on what department they're in. So if you take into account IT at $75,671, that's probably one position, but that one position impacts multiple funds. So you know a little bit about what those impacts are to each one of those funds. It basically breaks down, the majority of the funds for, the general fund would be about $1.4 million of that. Let me go back to that slide so I can kind of detail a little bit further. So out of that $1.6 million number down there, the general fund has impacted about 1.43, and then you can see what the impacts are to the water, sewer, electric, solid All right, and just so, so just so we can see also what was approved in the capital budget, what was not approved in the capital budget. In this current budget, we have about $3.58 million of capital that was requested and approved in the budget. Two million of that was in the police, had a, actually, I believe that's, yeah, that's the police department. And then you've got Parks and Rec, which had a significant portion of that, 785, with Public Works at 565, and then some other departments making up the remaining portions. This is kind of a total of the $3.58 million. As you can see, the majority of the approval stuff with the police department was with the radio project and their vehicles. We typically try to replace somewhere between, you know, eight to 10, or eight to 12 vehicles per year with our police department, so we keep our fleet fresh. As you can see, the Parks and Recreation Department, Pleasant Hill Community Center was one, had some vehicles that they needed, some heavy equipment vehicles as well, so those were approved. And then Public Works had quite a few vehicle improvements. We had a $250,000 sidewalk improvement that was requested by the board approved, so some pretty significant numbers in there as far as approvals that were approved for capital purchases within 2020, 2021 budget. Now, what was not approved? The majority of the items that weren't approved were a lot of cash capital items, as we call them, items that are difficult to capitalize. And sometimes, they would, they would individually be less than $5,000. Typically, our budget is $5,000 for capital items, that's what we consider to be capital items. So as you can see here, there's quite a few projects that weren't approved. Again, a lot of these items taken, for instance, Christmas tree addition, $10,000, that's something we'd pay cash for. You wouldn't capitalize that and pay debt service, which the majority of the items we see in this were all debt service-related items that we planned to borrow money for. Same thing goes with some of these other items. I know there was the new fire station, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of undecidedness at the time of the budget with regards to COVID, but also with regards to the 43 connector thing, a project that was going on and whether that was going to actually happen or not, which now we've learned that they have postponed that, so there was some delay in that, so we decided not to fund that for this particular year. Various other things, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or department heads are here to answer any questions you may have regarding some of these other items.
The, under the police, the surveillance and the building cameras, you know, and I think that's extremely important for this building. Was that just for this building or was it throughout the city? Because I don't, do we have a surveillance and camera system in other buildings in our city?
I think it actually included quite a bit of other chief. Do you want to come up and add some detail on that?
It was for, it was for the police station. The system that we have in now was the original system when the building was built and has no longer supported.
So this is just for the police department?
Just for the police.
No other funds for this building or any other buildings in the city?
No.
Do we have cameras in any other building in the city? Other than the police department?
Yes, we have them in the public bathrooms, we have them in some of the other departments, I believe. And the goal is to tie everything into one, under one platform.
We do, they, and they do have surveillance of those cameras at their facility currently.
Some, yes.
Some of them. We have to do that through our fiber network and make those connections. All right, this slide here kind of gives you an idea of our three-year projected costs that we're looking at. looking at. You'll see it kind of die off at the end, that typically, you'll see that a lot of times in cap, large, long-range capital planning where it kind of dies off. The larger number being this current upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two budget. That includes the items which you just saw, which were unfunded projects, as well as anticipated costs that department heads submitted for their upcoming, for the upcoming budget year. So we're looking at this upcoming year about three point seven million dollars in requests that are going to be coming from department heads. So we went ahead and have them put out a five-year CIP to kind of anticipate those. If those don't get funded, obviously, they get pushed to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. They don't get funded there, they get pushed to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So that's kind of how it goes. So you'll see those numbers kind of slide. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold a lot of state to the exact numbers that you see here because those tend to change over a period of time depending on whether things are funded or whether they're not funded in the future budgets. So let's give you a quick, quick idea about where we are with our fund balance. By the way, any other questions regarding the capital and personnel requests? Just to give you a quick update on the fund balance situation. Our fund balance right now, if we, as of the end of September nine thirty, twenty twenty, if we ended that fund balance plus whatever FEMA reimbursements that were due, goes back to some of the slides that you had back at the very beginning, we would be looking at fifty-five percent FEMA, or I'm sorry, fifty-five percent fund balance. Take out those FEMA reimbursements, and we don't get unless Hurricane funds do, we're at about forty-four percent right now.
So Mark, the forty-four percent is a real number because the other number, we're going to spend all the FEMA reimbursement that's coming to us, correct? I mean, if we're getting thirty-two million dollars for ditch cleaning, we're going to spend the thirty-two million or we're not going to get the thirty-two million?
That's correct. I would, I would not, you can't really look at eight million dollars of Stanley Wyatt, thirty-two million dollars of the ditch work or whatever as us padding our, our fund balance because that's basically money out, money in.
Right.
That's, those are going to wash. But this is, this is really right here, our fund balance, assuming that if this, this, at this point in time, at nine thirty, our fund balance is sitting at about forty-four percent. Financial staff have done a great job of getting all of this stuff called up, and this is pretty current right now. I mean, here we are, October sixth, and this is as of nine thirty.
So from a projection standpoint, I think you said we would be two and a half million dollars to the good if the projections for the year moved on. So if you added two point five million to the fund balance, what would that take that forty-four percent to?
Mary, you want to add?
I guess we're headed closer to fifty-five at that point. I mean, it depends, obviously, what the corresponding expenditures are, but at this point, that's where I'd ask.
I'm just going to go slide back real quick and see. Go back to the very beginning here. Yeah, I think Mary's correct because if you take that estimated reimbursement to four point eight million dollars and you figure you're going to put two and a half into that, assuming you didn't get any of those reimbursements, we're at forty-four percent, and you get two and a half, you're probably looking at a little fifty, fifty-one percent, would be my guess, when you say, Mary, based on what I'm seeing there, four point eight being due.
So our current, our current expenditures for the year is thirty-eight million, so we just, you know, at ten percent of that's, that's about, that's where I was going, adding about ten percent to the forty-four.
All right. So any questions on fund balance or as far as that goes? I think this kind of gives us an update as to where we are on our, our fund balance situation. I would say fund balance plus our FEMA reimbursements at the end of the year, just projecting out, I think we, I think we had kind of run some quick numbers on that, was it fifty-six percent? Is that correct? Kim and Mary, fifty-six percent on that one slide that we, we had. And then forty-five percent less, the FEMA reimbursement. So I think we're going to be good at the fiscal end of the year as far as our fund balance goes.
Do we have what the dollar amount is for the forty-four percent, what that would translate to? I know that's often a challenge, but.
Seventeen?
Sixty, seventeen. Sixty, seventeen million. We're at about thirty-eight, thirty-seven and a half million right now, and we're going to add the two point fives. So we're at about forty million. So, yeah, sixteen percent of that, fourteen percent of that, yeah.
So, yeah, about forty, let's call it fifty percent, just fifty percent of thirty-eight. I mean, you're thirty-seven million, you're looking at, you know.
But, but our revenue will be forty.
Yeah.
So it's got to be kind of forty. So you're looking at twenty million. Yes, yeah. That's, that's the numbers. I'm afraid to say anything, you know, because the bill, it's all going to depend on also what the expenditures and.
And all that can change based on, I mean, if the board makes a decision to say, hey, we're going to go spend two million dollars to do researching, or we're going to go spend two million dollars to go over here and buy this plan, you know, y'all do that and that number comes down, just like it did for the hundred and seventy-five. We were thinking, you know, two point five is where we would be, but the boards has allocated a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at the end of the year that we'll have to account for, for the simulator bill. So.
So what did, at our, one of our meetings a while ago, didn't we say that we would keep our fund balance around, was it thirty or thirty-five? What was that number we had decided on?
Twenty-five to thirty-five was what I.
So if we do that, what, what then available would be left, I guess, in essence, to spend? And it sounds like the report you're giving us today is we're in pretty good condition.
I feel, I feel very confident we're, we're in a very good financial position. And I know there was probably some doubt with the LGC and the audit that we had from the board whenever our auditor came and showed, hey, our fund balance is actually really low. But keep in mind, that was an audit that was end of our fiscal year two thousand nineteen. So that was the year after Hurricane Florence, and we had not started receiving any funding back, any reimbursements back from FEMA at all. Now, we're starting to see all of those reimbursements, as I showed you in some of the very first slides, where we were fifteen million dollars out of pocket on that expense of that hurricane. Now, we have restored almost eleven million dollars of that money. So that restoration now has improved the fund because that money goes straight back into the fund balance. So that money was money spent out, and then you get a grant to reimburse yourselves through the FEMA. So now that money's straight back into the general fund, which ultimately has restored back our general fund to where we were pre-Hurricane Florence, which is the reason why we have a fund balance. We want to make sure and have a healthy fund balance because you never know when you're going to get a fifteen million dollars bonus.
Mark, have you, for the ensuing year, have you looked at, and staff looked at precautionary measures with COVID and providing services to our customers and keeping our employees healthy? Have you looked at any additional expenditures that probably, for future purposes, it's going to cost to operate the city with respect to future pandemics or other health-related items? Or?
It's, it's hard to predict what may or may not happen, Mayor. I wouldn't think that it would probably get any worse than what we've just weathered, but then I'll knock on wood, and I'm sure I probably jinxed this because every time I say we're going to have a short meeting, we have a long one. So I will say that, you know, we, we are, we are pretty agile and ready to, to act when necessary. I don't anticipate any major expenses that we, do you, Mary, are you seeing, foreseeing any kind of major expenses forthcoming? I don't, I don't.
Don't? Yep. I think that we're doing a good job of where currently, and with the help from the county money, the four ninety-seven, I plan is to kind of be prepared to move forward and operate that way as long as necessary. There are several, there's a couple of personnel costs that could be ongoing that are related. We do have somebody, for instance, at Fort Totten, who does nothing but cleaning and masking and all that. That's very much a COVID-related position currently. And then we have some additional HR expenses that come out just because of the work they do. And so those could be, there could be some, some small sort of ongoing personnel costs, but, but it's, I think it's minimal for the most part. And the operations I know, and I don't know all the operations of every, of every single department, but.
Well, one reason I bring it up, and I don't know if this is the time to do it, or you can, we can do it a long time. I know it's like the day, traffic all the way out to the, to the road, folks trying to pay their bill. I know it's probably the timing of the time of the month, but, and I know that we probably could do additional things to encourage folks to go to other locations to pay their bill, but I'm not so sure that maybe the drive-in is so full because people feel the drive-in right now is safer than going to grocery stores and other places to pay their bill. So looking at the overall optimal operation of the city and providing the type of services we want to provide our citizens, those are some of the other type things I'm thinking might cost us a little bit more money to do business in, in the next ensuing year. And as an example, again, back to either we need to do some type of a public relations campaign or make sure that we're on our TV three, providing citizens with the, the information as to how they can pay a bill besides sitting in a drive-through line. It remind me of several of the banks around here. I'm not real pleased with that level of service, but I have no control over that. So if you have any comments on that, and I know it's probably timing with the, with the, Barbara, you having worked over there, you would know, are the things we can do to make our citizens more aware how to pay their bill?
Well, we have been since the early days of the pandemic. We, every person who comes to the drive-through, we give them a flyer that we've created that tells them all the options they have to pay. And there's about, you know, a dozen or so other options, and either Food Lions or Piggly Wiggly, we talked about that before. They can pay, they can also pay online. We also, if the credit card machine is up and running, so you can call in or come in and pay your credit card, pay by credit card or debit card now. And in some ways, part of the growth, this is one of the things that we've had a couple of meetings about this, part of the growth is at some point on the five or six really busy days of the week, of the month, which is what, what it is. It's not every day, obviously, that it acts like that. There's just not enough real estate there for the number of cars that want to get through. I mean, I, we can, we can tell them to go someplace else, there's just people who aren't willing to do that. We do have the doors open, they can come in, we're not accepting all payments in, but we're doing all the customer service stuff inside the front door at this point. So, yeah, at some point, there's more cars than there is, than there are spaces. They're lined up today, yeah, when we were just trying to get out to come here, it was still a mess. So I'm open to suggestions. We've had a couple of, Matt has worked in the Police Department, we've been working, the Safety Officer, we've all been working kind of together, trying to figure out what's the best method to get them in and get them out quickly.
Well, probably exhausted into discussion, other than the fact, I know you had quite a few cycles that you tried to reduce that down to, but in turn, is there, is there a time-sharing methodology to everything not bunching up two or three days of the, of the month?
Right, spreading it back out.
Where that drive-through is flowing, placed on pretty evenly.
The Electric Building Department is shaking their head no. But, but we can certainly look at, at trying to find, I mean, we're, I don't think we're finished with trying to come up with a solution. But, and I, like I said, and every time we grow, is, you know, that's more and more people coming into our door. We thought about shutting it down altogether, that people would figure out a way to do it some other way. I do know that some of the other social, that's some of the other service agencies and government agencies in this town were doing that. They just went a hundred percent online and there was, they were closing their doors permanently. But I don't, I don't know what else to say at this point, except we will continue to try and we're open for any suggestions.
Well, Mary, after that, we, one of our meetings back, we discussed this in that the office was going to be open. And I was assuming that, that the office was going to be open, that you would at least have one window for customer service related issues, and then another window would then for payments. Because as the mayor stated, and I've been through that process over there, and we all know that the traffic over there, you on your lunch hour, and you come over there and you want to pay your bill, and you're in your car, and you're, you're sitting there for thirty minutes or more, depending on the time. You know, I thought that another window was going to, even if you have to have one customer in the building at a time to pay their bill.
And we're currently, we're currently using those windows for customer service issues. There's just not enough space in there to allow all of that. We can certainly look at trying to do that a few days a week, you know, maybe, it's just going to, you know, they just end up waiting in line outside. But we've been trying to keep customer service business inside, and it stays busy. We still have a line out the front door just doing customer service and then payments on the outside. Once again, we're, I'm willing to try it. I'm willing to keep it open again.
Have you ever thought about like extended hours here in some of those peak times when?
That has certainly come up. I'm willing to do it. I can, once again, staffing and payroll and those kind of issues, but, yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with making those kinds of options.
Mayor, I want to go back to our online deal. So do, if, can somebody at this point go online and pay their bill?
No. Not without a fee. There's currently a fee you have to pay.
There's no way to like email or?
So we could call, the, the system allows you to call and make a card payment.
During office hours.
During office hours. You can also do.
Without a pay, without a fee or with?
Without a fee.
Without a fee. So maybe that's what needs to be pushed out because I'm sure many people, if it's just a phone call, I believe they would.
Well, just moving forward, I mean, we're, we're in the middle of a very robust change, okay? This robust change involves your MUNIS system that we're working on as well, which is the entire financial model. And that entire financial model has a payment model that will ultimately be implemented, which will allow for these payments at no fee also. But we've got to get the MUNIS implemented before we can actually start offering that. Because right now, our, our online payments are with a service that charges us a, a fee, or charges the customer if they need to do it. Otherwise, they have to charge us. So we're in the, in this middle, this, this area of co-mingled options to where, once we get out of that, it's going to be very clear. And I think too, this is where the board needs to decide the culture, which we're going to cultivate within our municipality. If we're going to continue the culture of, hey, you know, we're going to physically sit across the desk from you and provide you this customer service experience, or are you going to provide them a very positive customer experience but doesn't require me to have my eyes set on you, like a lot of other businesses have gone to, then that's the culture that we need the direction to move forward on. I can tell you that, that, and I'm not trying to compare it, I've talked to the mayor and he's like, we don't want to be Duke, but I'm trying to compare ourselves to what I experienced because I was a Duke customer twenty-five years ago in Hickory. And twenty-five years ago in Hickory, they said, we're closing our customer service centers. You can go pay at these locations if you want to pay your bill in person. Otherwise, you can pay your bill online at this option, or you can do, download this app, or whatever it may be. And that was, but you still were able to call and speak to a customer service rep if you had a customer service problem. That may not be the culture, that may not be the model that this board wants to go with, but ultimately, that's still a decision on how we want to move forward. We provide opportunities for people to pay at Piggly Wiggly, every Piggly Wiggly in the city, every Food Lion in the city, and every Walmart in the city in person if they wish to do so. I mean, how simple would it be for you to pay your, go buy your groceries, but then if you needed to pay in person, if you wanted to pay in person, you could actually pay in those locations. We also have where you can pay online. Granted, there's a fee right now, but once we get through the MUNIS system, that will be implemented without a fee. You can call us and you can pay without a fee using a card. You can come into our office and pay using a card. You can come by and drop off your payment in a drop box and we'll process it for you. You can mail in your payment. There's, there's the prepaid option. We've got so many options out there, we're about optioned out. So the only option then at this point is what culture does the board want to do because one, some of them are very personnel position-heavy, and some of them may not be as personnel and position-heavy, especially if we move to more of the electronic online payments and, and so forth and so on, where if you want to pay in person, you can pay at one of our places, but we still would need to have a call center for customer service-related dangers. So there's lots of different things.
It might be burdensome, and as you're describing this, all I can think of while you're describing this Duke thing is Suddenlink, you know, which is the worst process. They went to a totally call, no in person, you can't see anybody, and I've heard more complaints about that than anything else. So that scares me when I hear you talk like that. But, and, you know, this might be labor-intensive, but it may be reaching out to every one of our twenty-one thousand customers and saying, okay, here are your options, you know, and having a conversation, and which would you like to use? Because we may not have the manpower to have in-person visits, but you can. Because we may not have the manpower to have in-person visits, but you can certainly try each one of these. You want to set up a bank draft, a lot of people don't realize, they can set up a bank draft with no fee, and just have it drafted from your bank account monthly.
I will assure you, I will assure you, number one, that I am not pushing for the Duke model. I, I am merely stating what the options are from this spectrum, end of the spectrum, to this end of the spectrum. And right now, it's really, it's, it's kind of the, the board's clay to mold, because we're in this middle of this transition period to where we're trying to get where things are getting simpler as far as customers to be able to pay things. You know, you would think the prepay option would be something people would be interested in. You prepay it, you know you've got an app, everybody's so used to using apps and all this other stuff. We got what, 70 people out of 20,000 customers that we have that signed up for it? So, and we, we've advertised and submitted all kinds of information out there. I can tell you, just as Mary mentioned, every single person that comes through that drive-through is given a flyer whenever they come through there and make their payment, to list out the options. All during this COVID period, for the last five months almost, people have been given those flyers. So. It's just, it's changing the culture. If you want to change the culture, it has to be changed at that level.
And I'll be honest, I'm a customer, and I would like to probably be prepaid, but I know nothing about it. I would, you know, I talked a little bit to, to prior administration, and I was going to be put on it and whatever, it never got the information. So I really don't have any information on the app or anything like that. Sure. You know, and that's fine, and that's okay. But I, I just think it's going to, it may take a little more labor and time to educate, but I think maybe we need to have a little bit more robust, and maybe personally speaking to people and asking what they would prefer, and how, how can we assist them, and making it easier for them to pay their bills.
I'm done.
Oh, you're done? Well, I was gonna, I'm gonna cross over to something else, since we're discussing finances, our financials. And I don't know, Alderman Harris is able to chime in or not, if she's able to, at a point to just hear us, or? But I know back in September, I think it was, she asked Mark, she asked him, and to have the COVID Relief Fund, some of the funding that we received from Graven County, she asked for $50,000 to go to the nonprofits. And I think she asked a little bit more information, and wanted that to be discussed at this workshop. So I don't know if she can hear, she wants to talk?
Yes, I can, Barbara.
All right. Is this a good time?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask if it would be appropriate to talk about that under here, to the finances. But looking over all of the funding stuff, I was gonna see how Mary felt. But I mean, I would, I really think it would be a great idea for us to allocate $50,000 for nonprofits to come and apply, and get us to $1,000, because they're directly impacting the community during this COVID time. And there's directing, there's directing impacting communities a way where we can't, can provide this funding. And I feel if the funds are available with $50,000, we should be able to do it. So I just wanted to have some discussion on that, and see the temperature of the board.
What, what would the money be used for?
To impact the community with COVID. So there's some nonprofits that, like Over in Primbrook, they're at the, the center, and they're helping feed the children. They're doing daycare-type of things, they're providing internet services and stuff. So we'll be able to offset some of the funds that they're kicking out for COVID situation, while parents are still, you know, at work, or can't be with their kids.
And so there's a lot of other nonprofits that's basically doing the same thing. Well, I, I'm all for it, and I think that, just like when, I think it was back in June, that the Swiss Bear launched the COVID Relief Loan Program, and, you know, I think that was a great plus for our small businesses, some of our nonprofits. So at this point, if we're receiving funding from the county through the COVID Relief Fund, you know, I, $50,000 is just a drop in the bucket. If we do have, after, you know, we take care of our city expenses and what's needed for the city, I think that, I'm all for it, and I, I agree with you, because there's been a lot of businesses that's been hurt.
Alderman Best and Alderman Harris, I would, I could support that. I guess I would need more information as far as who would administer it, would you have to make application to it? Who makes that final determination, what are the questions we ask? I'm more interested in the process, more than the amount, I believe we'd be able to do something like that. But I'd be more interested in, you know, how we're going to decide who gets it, and how they get it, and do they?
Okay.
You know, I, I just think that's reasonable.
That is definitely valid, I think we can kind of maybe copy the way that Swiss Bear did it for the small business loan. But I figured that Mary and Mark can get together, and they'll present some information on the best way to be able to do that. But nonprofits are nonprofits, they have to be official 501(c)(3), and they need to be able to fill out the application and answer a few questions on how these funds are going to impact the community directly, based on what's going on with COVID.
Alderman over.
Mark, can you maybe revisit what you explained earlier about the two buckets of money from the COVID relief? I think one was for CDBG, and then one was for, to offset our costs and expenditures as a city. Can you explain what the difference in those are?
Sure, so we have two pockets of money, two different allocations for one of them have occurred, which is the CDBG funds for coronavirus-related issues. One of them was around $150,000, one was around $190,000, is that correct, Mary? Two, two allocations, Lord, yes, Lord, thank you. So, so two of those allocations have been made, and they can be used for, there's certain criteria, and forgive me, I don't know all the criteria. Maybe, Jeff, do you know what all the different criteria is for the CDBG usage? I know it's low to moderate income, it's for rental and assistance and, and utility expense, as far as all the different money. We had kind of proposed, and I think if I recall, it was brought to the board for approval to, for RCS to administer those funds, if I recall correctly. There was a recent allocation, so I assume that's going to be an extension of whatever that is. There's certain criteria that they have to meet. So forgive me if it hasn't been here, it's one that, I know we had planned to keep a brain, or has been, I just can't recall all the meetings off the top of my head. But that is the CDBG funds. So two different allocations for the usage of, for rental assistance and utility expense assistance. Then you've got the CARES Act funds, which come through the federal government, down through to the counties. And the counties were required to allocate a certain percentage of those funds to municipalities, okay? I think 25%. That, that amount, then, what our amount came out to be, was 497,000, is that correct, Mary? $497,000 of CARES Act funds, but we had to show a plan for either what we have already expended, or what we plan to expend between now and December the 31st. So all of that had to be accounted for in each expenditure. And that plan had to be submitted to the county for approval. What we had heard is some.
Okay, Mark, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because that, that's based on the email that I had prior to going back and forth with you, and when I spoke to, with you guys at the board, maybe two months ago, about having the conversation about allocating some of this money that was coming from the county, that came down from the governor in regards to COVID. And I also explained the different ways that it could be allocated within the community. And we never had that conversation, but I did ask for that. So now that the plan was already made, two meetings ago, you said that we could have a discussion with Mary to see about how we can utilize those funds. So I know how the funds could be utilized, I'm asking if the board is going to have a conversation about putting money aside, $50,000, to allow nonprofits to apply, to use these funds to help people in the community with COVID, or if that's dealing with the COVID situation. So I, I asked, and it never got done, the conversation, and here we are now, and now it's, oh, the plan was already made. So I'm trying to understand, how can we personally directly impact communities that are suffering from COVID right now?
I, I guess if y'all want me to answer that question, I, I thought it was kind of pointing more towards the board. But if you want me to answer that question, yes, we can have that conversation. Can the plan be modified? Absolutely. We were under a time crunch to get it submitted, we didn't know what amount was, the board would be willing to accept. So we had to put together a plan, because we knew we were going to spend X amount of dollars. That can be modified at any time if this board so chooses. Ultimately, the board has the authority to make whatever changes they want to make. If the board wants to allocate $50,000, then I need four of y'all to say, Mr. Stevens, we want you to put $40,000 or $50,000, or whatever the number is, towards Coronavirus CARES Act Relief Fund, towards nonprofits, and Mary and I will make sure that happens.
I have, you know, I've personally been contacted by some nonprofits who have sent me letters of request because they saw that funds were being sent down from the state. So with that being said, my suggestion would be, is that we do appropriate $50,000 to put in a separate fund. I would ask that potentially we talk to BEV Corp., or, that's the group that's handling the Swiss Bear Fund, so it's a third party. So we're not involved, they handle the application, they review it, they make the distribution. So again, there's nobody saying, give it to this one, give it to that one. Maybe with the lead of Alderman Harris, she'd like to, small group of us, to determine what the questions are we're going to ask, what's the requirements, put that together, meet with BEV Corp., and, and move this on, and, and let them decide. It removes it from us, and I think it's a more fair, transparent process. We just need to put the limitations on it, you know, $50,000, each award is $1,000, or however much money we decide, and then let them handle it from there. So that would be my, I guess, motion.
I second that.
I agree, thank you so much, Sabrina, thank you for your support on that, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Okay, yeah, a motion and a second is there a discussion? The only discussion I would like to bring up about that is, there needs to be a sunset on, on, on when this is going to be used. I don't, I don't want to be going over, well, I'm probably be here, but.
I would think December 31st, because that's the date we have to use the money by. So let, let me amend it and say my motion, and saying that the funds must be used by December 31st, and they will come out of the CARES Fund money. So that, they're specifically coming out of that place, and we're not taking them from somewhere else.
Okay, and, okay?
So I, and that's a question.
I'm okay with that.
So, mayor, question with that being said, Mr. Stevens, the plan would then have to be amended that we sent to the county, correct? So what, where is the $50,000 going to come from out of that plan that we're not going to do? Because now we're shifting that money to provided nonprofits.
Mary, do you want to answer that?
I got it, when we first initially got this opportunity, I contacted each of the department directors and asked them for expenditures, what they estimated they would spend, and then we added it to what we currently spent. So I would definitely just get back with them and find out, what have you done? What is, is there anything on here that is not a must-do? But, you know, it, it was a, it was a, on our wish list, if any of these things were not mandatory and/or necessary, we would, we would be able to whittle it down. I don't think it would be a problem to come up with a, a lion's share of that amount of money, though. I think we could probably whittle it down some if we needed to do that. I could give you the exact categories if you want, and give me a chance to, to get back in touch with all those folks and find out what, what they estimated, and if we can adjust their estimates.
Well, I'm not going to not vote for this, but I would like to know from Alderman Bingo, or Alderman Harris, a typical example of, of a request, or the application process, if it's going to be draconian? And are people going to be able to expeditiously receive a grant, benefits, whatever this is going to be? Is the process going to be so encumbered that 90% of the folks are not going to want to try to apply for it?
Again, if we go with, with BEV Corp., which we've done with Swiss Bear, with this other grant program that we gave funds to, you know, it seems to be fairly easy, but you do have to put in information with it. I think Alder, Alderman Harris gave a great example of a nonprofit that is providing daycare. While COVID, because kids are out of school, parents have got to go to work, that may help supplement funds to pay for daycare. I mean, they would have to be specific, again, it's just not a matter of sign your name and here's the grant. I think they're going to have to meet certain criteria, whatever is decided. I'm, I don't have the answers to those questions right now. But I agree, there has to be questions.
Well, my question is, is I don't want it to be a, a significant hardship on, on individuals that might apply, as to where they don't want to apply. Because I know some of the things out there, I'm not saying in New Bern, but there are places that there are so many requirements to receive the funding, that folks are not applying, and then the money's just sitting there. So I really don't know much about the process.
And I don't either. I guess it's going to be up, up to us to determine that process.
Okay.
And we give direction. I'm just using the example of what we did with Swiss Bear with the rental and, you know, grants.
For what I think I'm, I'm hearing and have heard, I, I think in New Bern, North Carolina, again, I'm not, not going to vote for this, but I, I think RCS could get this money where it needs to go, as equitable and as expeditious as any group I know of. I just want to make sure that it's, it's processed properly, that it's equitable to all citizens that want to apply for it. And they certainly have a lot of need, but that, again, I'm not going to, I appreciate the efforts on the part of the two Aldermen. So, Jeff, something?
I, I'm just wanting to make sure that it doesn't take away from the items like PPE and stuff that were budgeted for, for the future, and that we've used in the past, and that it doesn't leave our public safety without the proper equipment they need to continue with this battle with COVID-19. Mark, I mean, is this going to hamper any of that type of stuff?
I, I think we're good, as Mary indicated, a lot, some of these are, are project-related works, they're, they're PPE-related works, their personnel costs, I guess, I think is some of the things that you've got. There's tons of different categories that were included in this thing. So I, I have no, I have no worries about the PPE portion, especially with the fact that we've got to have the money expended by December of 31st. If this was, if this money was good for five years, I'd say, you know what, there's a chance that COVID could go on for five years, and that, you know, we may have PPE expenses for the next five years, okay? But, but I don't know that, and I, but the money definitely doesn't last that long, so.
Yeah, and is this, this going to be for 501(c)(3) that's inside the city limits of New Bern?
Yes, I, that would, I would only.
Yes, 501(c)(3), and I agree to what Alderman Bingo said, going through that process at Swiss Bear. We can get on a call whenever and create this criteria, if it wants to be me, Sabrina, and Barbara. But I think it's going to be very simple, and I just think that this is going to be a win for everybody, and a win for people in the community for us just doing this, and it's a one-time thing.
My, my last comment, Mark, is if this money, let's just say that this program is put together, and only $20,000 is expended, where does the $30,000 that remain go, back to the county?
Yes, I would agree.
Yes.
As of December 31st, any unspent funds will go back to the county. But we won't know that until next June, when the audit comes in. The auditor is actually the ultimate one, who will look at the money we got, look at how we spend it, and make the decision at that time. So, but, but, but yeah, anything that's not spent as of December 31st.
We should put a cutoff at, like, November 15th for the grants, and so we'll know what's left, and.
Yeah, I agree. Those would be details, maybe I could ask that, and I don't know, we've got a week. Could we bring it back to the next meeting to bring it up, you know, under new business, to bring details back for all of us to review and, and decide upon? Do you, Mark, do you think that's reasonable?
We could definitely put something together in a week, I think. I don't, I'll have to, I know the pre-agenda is already out, so we'll just have to put a place order that may not be a lot of detail to it, but while we're working on it, but we'll, we'll definitely get it on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Okay, well, we have a motion, so any other discussion? Although the motion say aye?
Aye.
Although the same motion carries.
All right. Okay, well, there's no other questions, any other? Any other questions on the financial review? If not, then we'll move on with our, our projects.
Can I go?
Sure.
So after looking at this, if we decide, when do you want us to tell you that we should spend money to either hire people or do a capital project?
Well, ultimately...
When does that part come?
I guess ultimately I was going to get that towards after we talked about all these different projects and everything else, but I will go ahead and cover that now. So I think that's a great, great question, great point. What we're going to be looking at in this is receiving some kind of direction from the board or no direction from the board. I would prefer the direction from the board, whether it's, it's fund some of this stuff or not fund some of this stuff, that would be much appreciated because then it may be that y'all have a particular interest in certain things that y'all can decide on as a board. It may be, hey, Mr. City Manager, we're going to give you X amount of money, you go figure out how you want to spend it that's in the best interest of, of all this and come back to us and then we'll okay that or whatever. I just, it, it may be that you're happy with putting $2.5 million into bank at the end of the year because we have $32 million worth of projects and $8 million worth of recreation centers to build as far as ditch projects and so forth and so on. So it may be that you want to put that into bank so that we can spend that money towards those kinds of things, which will ultimately be reimbursed. So there's lots of options out there. I'm just looking for some direction on how you want to do that because I told you I would come back at this particular venture, give you where we are on the financial state, which I think is in a very good situation, and we can go from there. So yes, at the end of this meeting, I would like some direction from the board on how we're going to proceed. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss the City Hall Annex project. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Montane and Mr. Urr. I think both of y'all are, are here to discuss that. The board, as y'all will recall, we presented this to the board back, what was that, May? Aprilish?
March, maybe.
March, maybe. And with the uncertainty, obviously, of the COVID timeframe, we were asked to bring this back in July, and then with the uncertainty of where we were at that point, I made the recommendation with submission of the budget to let's just cover this during the financial update, which is now today in October. So at this point, we're going to kind of go back over where we are with the City Hall project. Obviously, there were three different scenarios we looked at, which was an internal elevator, an external smaller annex that had an elevator shaft with some, some steps and secondary ingress egress and provided handicap accessibility to the different floors. And then there was the larger scale annex project that would have added extra square footage as well as the accessibility to City Hall and the other floors of City Hall for handicapping accessibility purposes. But, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tripp. Tripp, you want to come up and kind of highlight those, go over those different options again? And then we're here to answer any...
Do we need to do that? Do we need to do that? I'd rather get into the discussion.
Well, let's get into the discussion, that's fine. I mean, I don't want to waste our time.
Because I'm, I'm here to tell you, we need an elevator. I'm not leaving here tonight until y'all agree on an elevator one way or the other. So I don't care, inside, outside, full building, just like Barbara needed a community center, I need an elevator, y'all. We, we have got to make City Hall accessible. I just, I can't even face Darcy Hilgrith. Every time I see her, every time she posts, I can't face her anymore because her son can't get in this building. And I've been listening to this for 35 years, and so it's time to, time to cut the chase. We know what the options are, we just need to decide what we're willing to spend. We've got the options here as far as payments, how much a year. We're going to have to fund it some way, so that's all I care about. Whatever this board decides how much money they want to spend, fine, I just want an elevator.
So which option do you want?
You know, at this point, you know, would I like the whole kit and caboodle? Because I think it would be nice to have all the department, you know, more departments down here have it, but I understand $6 million is a lot of money. And can we stomach, you know, $400,000 a year? Well, that's 20 years, and what, can we stomach that? I don't know that we can. So to me, because I don't want to disturb the historical integrity of the interior of this building, then I would say put the small, you know, put the elevator on the outside so it would be, you know, option B to me.
You're making nice...
But, you know, I'm, I'm here for y'all to discuss this. If you think it's better to have the full-blown project, I know Mark would rather have the full-blown project, and I understand why. I mean, if we're going to do it, we might as well do it, but I do understand the money situation. Do we want to be burdened with that kind of debt?
I'll give it to you for a show of hands, those that are interested in Item B. Would you like to show hands?
Item B would be just the exterior tower with what stairs and an elevator that would get us to this floor.
Is that your, is your ward?
It's not so much, but this building belongs to all of us, belongs to the city of New Bern, and all our citizens, no matter where you live, needs to access this building.
Forget with the item, option C, Mark, what properties would we be able to sell? Have you thought...
With the, with the analysis that we looked at, we, well, depending on...
No disrespect to you, Tripp, sorry.
Again, depending on the culture...
I'd much rather you all talk about it than me.
Again, depending on the culture that the board is willing to accept for the CAPS office, we could potentially close that office as well as the Development Services and HR office and combine every bit of that into this new facility.
What's the CAPS office?
UVO. UVO. Now, granted, we would not, we would not necessarily have the drive-through option, but I mean, there's lots of options that you can look at. Obviously, online payments, we would still have a kiosk where people could come in and pay, we'd have in-person, you know, where, with window glass where people could come in and pay. There, there wouldn't be the drive-through option unless we did some kind of little station or something to where people could pay. But other than that, I mean, all, every, everything that you see in those two offices could be combined into this new annex.
And what about parking for all the extra staff down here and now the visitors, is the contractors and that will be coming down and everything else?
Well, obviously, we have a very large parking lot across the street here. That's about, maybe whoever, 60 spaces, 60-ish spaces here across the street. Obviously, parking is something that we would definitely look at if we had to get down deep in the analysis.
And those two buildings, what do you think they're worth and what do you think they might sell for to offset the cost of the annex down here? What's the matter?
Tax, I mean, you would have to look at maybe tax value, usually that's what you use as a rule of thumb. So tax value, I believe, on First Avenue was about seven. I think it was about 700. I don't know what the tax value is on UVO.
I'm not familiar with the DED.
Barbara, you don't remember that? You don't have it. I'm sure it's something you can look on. What is it?
I'd say it's probably more valuable if you tear it down with the condition of the building.
Yeah, I totally agree. So the land, you're basically saying the land is more valuable than the building?
Based off the walkthrough we did a couple of years ago with the internal HVAC and electric and things like that.
So would a conservative figure be $1.5 million for both of them or...
I think that, I think that might be a little heavy.
A little heavy?
Yeah, I'd say maybe a one to 1.2. I don't know, you're sitting beside the guy that's the real estate advisor, so he's the guy that works in it every day, so...
I think that the first, you know, the HR and Development Services, that building is more valuable, maybe to either the college or somebody like that, that with the Volk Center being there, I think that has more valuable, value to it than UVO potentially.
Tripp, can, can the option with the small annex be built and designed to where in a future phase you could then include that wraparound larger annex?
We could. Essentially, what I would recommend is that you engage us to advance the design for the larger project, at least through initial engineering, and then we can back off and just implement and finish the design on the accessibility piece. And I'd also recommend, in addition to the elevator, that we also do toilets because we, we've got a shortage of facilities in this building. And, and then at some point in the future, the board could elect to, to add on the remainder if they so chose. It, it's important that you think ahead like that. For instance, let's take the water main, and Chief has already talked to me a little bit about wanting to sprinkle the building, and, and that's always a, a recommended practice. It helps you with your insurance rates, but also it saves lives, more importantly. But, you know, for instance, we'd need to do that pre-planning to size the sprinkler main correctly or the water main correctly so that when we feed the new toilets, we wouldn't have to go back and replace it to upgrade it, to do the sprinkler later if that choice were implemented.
Another thing is we've never even looked at trying to sprinkle this building or upgrade this building in needs. I mean, when you think about where we're sitting, no sprinkler in here, you know, the whole bit, I think that may be additional monies we potentially should look at that we're going to have to spend. Because it does concern me that, you know, where we're sitting up here, a fire could start up, you know, downstairs, yeah, we'd be able to get out down the fire escape, but still, there's a lot of safety measures we, we don't have in this building.
Correct. And I, this is a business occupancy. I, I think if you study your building code statistics, they are the least likely to have problems and loss of life with fire. So it's still a fairly safe building relative to other occupancy categories, but certainly from a property point of view, and obviously, this is a landmark in our community, you know, we have a lot to lose, so it's certainly a, something to be considered in terms of implementation. And just to remind you, you previously had us put together a fee for that larger package, and I only bring it up because within that fee, we had accounted for doing the calculations to sprinkle this side of the building, again, so that we get the correct size water main in the first time. So when work would be done on the inside of this building and perhaps when that outfit could be made, that we would be ready for it, at least from the utility infrastructure point of view.
Tripp, were you saying to, that you recommend completing the total plans for the $6.5 million addition? Is that what you said?
That would be my preference. I don't know that we'd have to complete them, but we would certainly have to advance them through the first 40%, I would say.
Well, some of my thoughts on that are that a future board might find different materials, particularly resilient materials, that are not available right now. And I think that if we went with either A or B, that I think it will be several years before we would ever do C. And having done that, a new board might have a totally different flavor or of what type of architecture. I think that the possibility, I don't know for a fact, on A, whether or not that would have to have any HPC approval or not, I don't know, but I know probably, obviously, with B and C would, and I think that the city would probably get by easier with the B approval than with the C. And adding to that, I haven't really researched it, and Mr. Rogier is here, as to whether or not an expenditure of 2 point, 2 point, 1, 2 million, $106,000, if, if that would kick us into compliance with the, with the total building or not. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, and so...
Can you answer that?
In an effort to answer, you, you raised a lot of good points. Nobody knows what a future board will do or whether they'll, you know, change their mind or change their direction. That's always a possibility, so there's some concern maybe in advancing the design. Secondly, I'd agree that it's a much easier sell to have the smaller addition that just is comprised of the elevator and the restrooms when it comes to the HPC and the public and, you know, the community engagement on that. It's a big part of this project. It doesn't matter what we do, even if we go with the option with the elevator inside, which I really want to discourage you for a number of reasons, and we can talk more if, if you want to know my thinking on that.
I think part of A, we're, we're trying to be non-invasive, but at the same time, if you're going to go and spend 1.3 million and not put a ramp to get people up to that layer, which I don't really want to see because I think it's...
Let me back up because I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not quite clear on which scheme is A, B, or C.
A is the interior.
Okay.
Option A, B, and C.
Correct, but at least with options B and C being the additions or the annexes, we will be fully compliant as long as we have the tower on the southwest corner of the building.
A did include an ingress egress that provided a handicap ramp, not the most ideal situation because it created a side entry point into the building, which made it a little more difficult to secure. Also, to Tripp's previous point about the requirements for the restrooms, keep in mind, if you go with the option B, as it's designed, it'd be punching through two of the restrooms that you currently have, one being the one up here that people use for this meeting, and the other being downstairs next to the mayor's office, which is two of the bathrooms that you currently have that would be used for hallway access into where the new annex is. So you're losing two bathrooms with that plan, so you definitely need to do the bathrooms.
Mary, these numbers that you gave us, the costs, were they at today's rates, you know, like 2%? So these are at the lowest rate, right, 3%? So these are, I mean, the money is pretty...
So there's a pretty good chance I gave the numbers that Mary probably put in the report to some degree. A lot, lot of things happening right now in the construction economy. You know, you've, anyone who's stick builds has probably heard the tale of the lumber that cost three times as much as it did in February and things like that. I'm going to be honest with you, things have been kind of in a lull, so I don't have any real fresh costs data to tell you, but I can certainly tell you, costs escalated pretty sharply after Hurricane Florence, and I expect costs will be somewhat higher than usual for the, you know, next year or so maybe, till things normalize.
Mr. Stevens, what have you figured out as far as losing those bathrooms? If you did option B, what, what would you do to put them back somewhere else or whatever?
Probably be in this building.
Option B would be part of the, it'd be part of the annex that you're asking.
Okay.
If you look at, if the plan, if you look in your package on the plans for that Tripp and them had, if you look at page 21 of 23, that shows you the option B annex, which would give you the stairwells, the entry point off of Pollock Street, and then it would have the restrooms both on the first and I'm guessing the second floor because you'd be losing, you would have no restrooms on this floor unless you add them back on this floor as you come up on the elevator.
And so not, not to sell too hard at this point, this is really a policy decision, in my opinion, but the annex building options eliminate the handicap ramp altogether by using a two-sided elevator, and that's a, a nice feature, to say the least.
Well, 2019 was the year of the elevator, and we're in 2020, I kind of like option B myself.
And like I said, I just, I just, we need an elevator. So, you know, 35 years ago, they had the same discussion, and then it was too much money, and they were going to build the tower, and that never happened, and they pushed it off, and then it never happened, and at some point, we've got to make this building accessible. We just have to. There's no reason that it should not be accessible and that our staff, our, you know, our citizens can get in here with, with some ease. So I'm, I'm willing to support whatever flavor the rest of the board wants. I just ask that we do something.
Well, like I say, I didn't, I didn't mean to, when I said it's in your ward, I mean, I deal quite a bit with folks that are ready to see an elevator, and I get quite a few complaints and, and so I would, I would recommend looking forward to option B myself, but I'm not, I'm not one to make motions.
Well, I'm, I'm with option B as well because I look at it, where you're, you're looking at 2.1 million dollars with an annual payment of almost $180,000. You're still be able to have the bathrooms, but they'd be down into 40 on the first floor, correct?
No, ma'am, they'd actually be on all three floors, potentially. Certainly, certainly the, the lower two floors.
And Mr. Stevens, you have, again, we've talked a little bit about your concerns about the security of the building and how ingress egress would be with that, so you, tell us a little bit about what, what your thoughts are on that.
Well, if you, if you choose option B, obviously, I'd want to sit down with Mr. Urr and go... Well, if you choose option B, obviously, I'd wanna sit down with Mr. Urr and go through some security options. Obviously, security becomes a concern for me. We've made some changes in the back, back here, that require a key fob access, you can't come in through the back. Obviously, there's interior modifications, in my mind, or in my thoughts, that need to happen to this building, that would improve the security somewhat, and I think we can incorporate those. I don't know, right now, whether it can be incorporated into this plan. We'd have to look at some modifications downstairs, upstairs, so forth and so on, but maybe there's ways in which we could modify the way the elevators work, or whatever. I really need to sit down with Mr. Urr, because obviously, we, the board made a decision to move forward with option C. We continued with option C, and then the board said, oh, put the brakes on it, let's talk about it when we come back. So honestly, we kinda just set this thing to the side, and this is the first time we're kinda picking and dusting this thing back off to discuss. So I would need to sit down with Trip if the board chooses to go with option B.
As being our CEO, and the person in charge, and who speaks to us, I mean, what is, what is your thought process? Yes, we have to vote on the money, and I understand it. Do you feel that it, you know, we're crazy, and we should just go ahead and build the whole shebang, and bring your staff down here? Would that be, make us more efficient? You know, are we saving money, in essence, doing that way? I wanna hear those options, so that, I am gonna put you on the spot.
That's perfectly fine. You know, I think, I agree with Trip. I think I would discourage you against option A. I think you are, you are going in, and you're modifying an existing building, and in a way that I think your costs could be exacerbated very quickly, okay? You're restoring an old historic building, fitting in something, retrofitting, so it can get expensive very quickly. And having worked in public buildings, and working with this facility for some time, it is, it's a lot to work on to maintain and modify, if you can modify it at all. Secondly, if the board doesn't have the flavor for a very large capital expenditure, even though I do think that it is a very efficient way to operate your government, in having a lot of these services here, i.e., you know, I think about the IT department, I think about your finance department, I think about having your accounting staff here, I think about having your development services, which is basically, and working with economic development. All of those would now be housed at this particular location, where everybody could be collaborating a lot easier, have these meetings, so forth and so on. I think the efficiency would be tremendous. Not to mention the fact that you're liquidating two properties, which at that point, you wouldn't have the maintenance responsibilities for, you wouldn't have to worry about, you know, the public buildings cost, and Matt's staff with two facilities that have to maintain, two air conditioning systems, two, you know, all electrical systems, all the different issues that run into maintaining old buildings, which a majority of our buildings are old. So the B option is kind of a point to get you to where, if you think the annex is something that would be a flavor that the board would support at some point, I think that's probably a good move at this time. Again, you can't beat the interest rates, but also, the construction cost with materials is extremely important at this point.
Sorry, I'm asking so many questions. Would we have, between the sale of the two buildings, and cash on hand enough to put down, say, $3 million, and, you know, cut that estimated, you know, project cost down to 3.5, and then it makes it a little bit easier to finance, and the payments aren't, you know, half a million dollars, or $450? So I'm just looking for other options, because I hear you, and the only thing, I did think that option C was the way we should go. It's just, I didn't know that we could stomach $450,000 a year, but if we have some cash to put towards it, and we're in a better financial position than we thought we were, and we can sell the other buildings, I guess that would be the way to go.
10% of your fund balance is $3.8 million.
Roughly, correct?
You're, if you, if you ended up a year at 50%, you take it down to 40%, you put $3.5 million down towards it, you've put in a pretty large down payment to a $6.5 million project, and you're down to a $2.5 million you would have financed to begin with. It's no, I kinda relate it no different as to the expenditure that we invested into our road infrastructure system several years back, at $4.5 million, to do a large resurfacing project across the city. So really, it really is a flavor of the board, and a decision of the board, but yes, if we end up where we're anticipating in at 50, 50-plus percent, 10% of that is about $3.5 million.
Well, you know, I'm looking at, we're sitting up here talking about funding, funding this project, and basing it off of sale of two buildings. We don't know when we're gonna sell those properties.
I mean, that is, that is true, but it could go towards that to pay down.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I'm just trying to get all the numbers, and figure out what it looks like from a financial position.
I was taking 3.8, just as a fund balance payment, not counting even the sale of those properties, which somebody, Brenda and Matt, both sent me the information for. The First Street property has a tax value, total property value is $684,000. The one that's on Lees Boulevard has an improvement value of $809,000.
Miss Alderman Odom, comment or question?
The only thing that I was gonna say is, depending on the appetite of the board, and what Trip said about future phases, one question I had, Trip, is if we went with the annex that's got an elevator, are we required to keep this fire escape right here?
I think, well, with option C, the building annex, obviously, the fire escape goes away.
Right.
I don't know that we've looked at it enough detail quite yet, to specifically answer that question with option B. Although I'm talking off the top of my head, and not having a chance to verify what I share, I'm thinking we still need it because of the number of people in this space. Okay, so there could be 100 people in this space at any time, certainly more than 50, you need two means of egress, and so I think we have to keep the, in all likelihood, I'd have to keep the fire escape. So the beauty of the C option is, we'd have an entry right in this window somewhere, so that we've got two nice formal ways of getting in and out of our courtroom.
And just as the mayor mentioned about, you know, future boards, and what somebody else might do, we're speculating that HPC would approve this. I meant, I remember that, that was a pretty radical plan that you put together with that foyer in between the-
Oh yeah, I agree, it's a challenge. And as you very well know, we never know what a board is going to do until a board does it.
But it'd be pretty hard for a board to justify not approving an option B, if the materials on a small annex would fit in with the-
Yeah, again, I think it's an easier sell, but it's likely to be the same climb up the mountain, just with less of an outcome. In other words, I foresee there will be a group of people who won't want to see anything happen to this building, and that will be the hardest constituency to convince, regardless of the option.
They will be the loudest constituency.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I support the elevator. I know it's something that we've been talking about for a while. I think Plan B would be a great option, because of the price point, and plus, I just feel like the buildings and stuff that we have right now, with everything going on, if it's not broken, we don't need to fix it, but we do need an elevator, and I think Plan B would be the best option.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, don't need everybody to allow it.
Well, you got two folks, Alderman Harris and myself, have mentioned option B.
And myself.
I'm sorry, Alderman, yes, there's three of us.
I like option B as well.
It's four.
Alderman Odom, how do you see it?
Option B is obviously, from a financial perspective, much easier to swallow, but we've all been on this board, and we've seen decisions in the past, we wish would have been made in different ways, to make it easier for the future. And I just, if there's a way to build that annex to where you could add on to it in the future, then I would be completely satisfied with option B. What I don't wanna do is build option B, and then we decide 10 years down the road, that we wanna add on to it, and we say, we've gotta start over from scratch, because what we did, you know, five years ago won't work. That's my only concern with option B.
Can it be drawn, and can we do it that way? Is that, is that a realistic possibility?
It is realistic. And it may also-
We draw it for the full deal, and we build what we can afford right now. I mean, does that sound reasonable?
And I even wouldn't have a concern if you were to somehow extend it in this area. I just think, until we get the parking situation downtown New Bern fixed, you're gonna ask developers, and staff, and the public to come here to do business with the city, and I personally think we still have a parking issue, and you're gonna exasperate if you eliminate what you do have right here. So, long-term, I think that's gotta be addressed before you did too much.
That was one of the issues we discussed when we first started talking about this, was the parking issue.
All right, I think I've heard enough, so I'm gonna make a motion, okay? Because I know everybody wants to get home to supper. So my motion is that I make a motion that we move forward with option B for an addition of an elevator, with drawings to come back that would include a full complex, but only build the necessary elevator to get into this building at this time.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion in the second. Under the questions, again, you wanted a full set of plans for the six-point-whatever addition.
Correct, but with the building plans for just-
Well, I mean, my only, what estimate of cost difference between a design for just the Pollock Street addition versus the total addition?
Be somewhere in the neighborhood of half the cost.
What would that be?
For design fees.
Sir?
For design fees, it'd be somewhere. So the, right at $700,000, maybe a shade above for the full design, and somewhere-
$350,000.
Yeah, it'd be a little less than that, actually. Maybe $300,000.
And the advantage of it would be that, for future planning purposes, and for symmetry, so to speak, if there is some associated with what we're doing, you would have that. The concern I would have in that design is that the HPC, even though they're only gonna approve the annex, they're gonna weigh heavily if they see that full set of plans, as where this building's going. And do you remember what the term was, and the concerns were with the Talbot slot, with the mass of a large building? And have you considered the concerns of HPC with respect to that amount of space versus what HPC was concerned with, with the Talbot lot?
So those are a similar issue, but maybe not the same one. It's a different composition aboard.
Well, I don't wanna spend $350,000, not knowing the flavor of the HPC board.
Second thing-
There's things up, throwing them in a wastebasket.
The project you mentioned-
That's not a little bit bigger building built here.
The project you mentioned got in trouble, because they were pushing the height limit, and we are well below the height limit with our proposal.
But there was a concern, all the way from the corner to Mitchell's Hardware, that people were concerned about the mass of that, of that building.
Again, I think it was a height issue that was driving that mass. And so in this case, we've got the, City Hall is in the primary area of visual concern, fronting the two streets, and the addition is essentially behind it. And that is a much, much different situation.
My concern is spending $350,000 on plans that, that we're gonna use part of them, which I'm all for, but we're gonna find out 10 years down the road, that we threw $350,000 away in design, that HPC, that future date's not gonna approve that much additional building, which nobody in this room knows whether HPC would approve that amount of building, impervious surface on this, on this lot, with all the roof designs, and all the other things, dynamics of that design you've got.
Oh yeah, and I'm, so I can withdraw that part of it. I wanna make this easy, and I wanna move the process forward. So I don't care how we do it. Again, I think the design should be flexible enough that we can add an addition to it. Again, we don't wanna waste what we're doing, if potentially, we do something down the road, like Alderman Odom said. You know, we could beat this horse for a while.
Let's just do it with the plans for the port that we're gonna do, and, I mean, we may not ever do the rest of it. And that's $350,000.
And what I said when talking about the future, I just didn't want us, or you, to design that elevator shaft, and point the elevator in a direction that, in the future, if we wanna come add on to it, we say, well, we really wish we would have turned it in a different direction. I'm not necessarily saying we need 40% drawings for the full building, so I'll be clear, because I agree with the mayor. Last thing we wanna do is spend, you know, $300,000 on something that's-
So would you like to withdraw that part of the motion, and just make the motion to go with option B, and be done with it?
Well, you need to define the amount of blueprint, the amount of architectural design that's gonna come to be done on it. I do, I mean, Alderman, I do, I do have the concerns that this thing be built, and then when the future board wants to add on it, it's just sitting out there, and it's just very incongruent with the design of the future board.
Well, if you look at the design where they, they were gonna put a tower here with an elevator anyway. That was part of the total design, so one was going to be on Pollock Street, another one on Craven Street. So to me, it looks like they're just building a portion of what they originally designed. Is that correct?
Essentially.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the question is, there is some magic to, if you do want to have the flexibility to more easily expand into the bigger idea in the future, it takes more work than what we've given you so far.
Well, I just, again, with ADA complacency, 10 years down the road, with COVID-19 and future work at home, employees and things, as to what, there might be reduction in office need, and things like that, we just don't know at this point. I don't see spending $350,000 to design something that is probably gonna have to be altered, that very, you know, not be, not counting COVID requirements for fire suppression and other things. So is your motion to do it with that?
My motion is just to build the tower, option B, and I'm sure they're gonna come back many times with the design. At least the work will start, they'll start trying to borrow the money, whatever we need to do, because we still know, this is an estimated cost right now, correct?
Yes, those are rather soft costs, at this point, based on preliminary drawings.
I guess what we're doing right now is starting the process and moving forward, that we've made a decision in the direction, and that's all I'm asking for at this point.
Okay, with those, with $350,000 of the plans, not 700 things about-
No, not, I withdrew that portion.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, is that, Harris, is that your understanding? She made the motion.
She's still there. Alderman Harris.
What was that question again?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Do I support her amended motion?
Yes, I amended the motion to withdraw the full building plans. Are you okay with that?
You amended it to say what against the brother?
To, I withdrew the portion where I said to design the full gamut, but just build one, so I've withdrawn that, and it's just to design this option B.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I second that.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's have a real call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Esther?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bigel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of Race Track Road project. We have Vaughn and Milton representatives here with us. The board had requested us to come for you tonight, to provide you different options or scenarios that were available to us through the Race Track Road, I guess, construction, whether that be widening, resurfacing, and there's lots of different flavors that we can go with, with regards to widening and adding sidewalks, or bike paths, or whatever. So at this point, I'm turning it over to Mr. Montane, with Vaughn and Milton, for their presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the board. Several, probably a couple months back, the board authorized me to move forward with hiring Vaughn Milton to do a feasibility study for widening, and the possibility of adding sidewalks onto Race Track Road. At the time, it was discussed that we would take the existing road width of 18 to 20 feet, and widen it to either 22 feet, or 32 feet, which would either include bike lanes, or not include bike lanes, and then the possibility of adding sidewalks on either one side, or both sides. Following that, we had a kickoff meeting between the folks from Vaughn Milton, engineer in my office, myself, Alderman Kinsey- engineer in my office, myself, Alderman Kinsey, and Mayor Outlaw. As a result of that meeting, we modified that scope a little bit to widen the road to 22 feet and then look at smaller shoulders and then the possibility of adding sidewalks on either one side or both sides. And then we looked at the possibility of widening it to 27 feet, which would be a bike lane on one side of the road, and then the possibility of adding bike lanes, or, excuse me, sidewalks on either one side or both. Very complicated. I think the memo that I put forward in the agenda package kind of outlines it a little bit better so you can kind of remember what we're talking about. But what I've got tonight is Kyle Compton and Dwayne Alligood with Vaughn Milton. They're here. They're going to do a quick little overview of the six different options that they looked at and the cost associated with them. And at that time, it kind of opened it up to discussion to the board and to them and to see what kind of direction the board may or may not want to go from this point. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to them.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Stole a good two paragraphs from my introduction here, but I'm Kyle Compton. With me, Dwayne is Dwayne Alligood. We're with Vaughn and Milton Consulting Engineers here in New Bern. We also have Lee Anne Friesen. She's a certified planner. So, we, one other, one other meeting that we had was on July 17th, which was with Mayor Outlaw and Alderman Kinsey and along with Mr. Montane and Mr. Childs. In this meeting, we made the decision to, the original plan was to have Race Track Road improvements from Elizabeth Avenue all the way to News Boulevard. And in this meeting, we decided, made the decision to shorten the area of the project to only the railroad tracks, which is just at the, at Latitude Church. This decision to shorten the area of the project considered for widening accounted for the additional costs that would be needed to modify the railroad track intersection and also that there is minimal traffic, pedestrian traffic seen from the railroad tracks north to News Boulevard. Preliminary environmental site review was conducted in the project study area. An NC DOT program called Atlas was used to identify features present within the study area, which are shown in the environmental features map. The features identified are not expected to be an impact on any of the design options that we evaluated. So, we, for the conceptual design for each of the design options, we used LiDAR survey data. This was obtained and used to prepare a model for each, each option. This model allowed us to calculate more accurate construction quantities and assisted with identifying utility conflicts and right-of-way impacts. Seven, seven different cross-sections with varying widths and sidewalk arrangements were evaluated. The roadway from Elizabeth Avenue to the railroad tracks. Dwayne's going to provide some more information on these in a, in a minute in the presentation, but I'll do a brief review of each of the design options. The first alternate, it's hard to see here. The first option is not, cross-section is not shown. And that's going to be to maintain and repave the existing 22-foot wide roadway utilizing the full width of the travel lanes. It's currently 22-foot wide. We would repave that and right now, we have nine-foot lanes. It would increase the full width to 11-foot lanes. Option 1A is to have a 22-foot wide way, roadway with two-foot paved shoulders on both sides. Option 1B is 22-foot wide, wide roadway with three-foot shoulders on each side. 1C is a 22-foot wide roadway with a three-foot wide paved shoulder on both sides and a sidewalk on the east side. That sidewalk's five-foot wide, and all the sidewalks are five-foot wide. Option 1D on the bottom is 22-foot wide roadway with a three-foot wide paved shoulder and sidewalk on both sides. And then, the last two options, 2A and 2B. 2A is 22-foot wide roadway with a five-foot wide paved shoulder, which can be considered a multi-use path, is on the east side. And then, option 2B is the same five-foot wide shoulder with, and a sidewalk as well on the east side. So, from these design options, we developed a base bid estimate along with two alternates, which can be bid and chosen separately if, if the budget allows. So, you would pick one design option and then bid the alternates as well. And based on what you receive from the, on your bids, you would, you have the opportunity to approve or not approve the alternates. Alternate 1 includes the replacement of a single 36-inch cross-line pipe under Race Track Road. This pipe is located just south of Latitude Church, adjacent to the city sewer pump station. Preliminary hydraulic analysis that we performed indicated the existing pipe size is inadequate. Just for reference, there's two 60-inch diameter pipes just upstream. That's under News Boulevard. Alternate 2 includes patching, resurfacing, and pavement marking for the existing pavement width from the railroad tracks north to News Boulevard. All of the design options are up to the railroad tracks. We give an alternate 2 that would pave, only pave the existing width north up to North, News Boulevard. For the pre-construction costs, we have provided an estimate for the cost of finalized design and provide full set of construction plans, specifications, and environmental permitting preparation. Additional geotech analysis is not anticipated for options 1, 1A, or 1D. The construction phase costs are broken down further within the report. And they're summarized here. We used NC DOT pay items for the estimates and applied a factor for unknown quantities and unknown major items. The contract administration and construction inspection costs are not included. For utility and right-of-way, so for existing subsurface utilities, there are a lot in the area owned by the city consistent of water and also both gravity and force mains sanitary sewer. Minor utility impacts are expected and that may include relocation of an adjustment to cross-line tie-ins as well as widened pavement placed over top of some of the utilities, which increases the difficulty to access later if needed. No major subsurface utility impacts were expected with any of the design options. The estimated number of utility pole conflicts are also noted there. Difficult for me to see it, so maybe for you as well. Additionally, for right-of-way impacts, these were calculated for each option based on the proposed ditch back slope. This square foot amount should be increased slightly to account for the acquisition based on a straight line versus our actual ditch, which varies in which. Our ditch back slope was based on the proposed LiDAR data. So, that actual right-of-way impact will likely increase slightly from what we have shown. For the design options with sidewalks, the proposed edge of pavement will be up to 14-foot closer to each home. This is the, the greatest impact that I see with the sidewalk options. We would have, the edge of pavement would be up to 14-foot closer to each home and the proposed back slope of the ditch approximately 28 feet from the front of the home in some locations. This may also cause a loss of one vehicle parking space in some driveways. Dwayne will now review how the cost estimates for each design option were prepared, recommendations from the preliminary, and also recommendations from the preliminary geotechnical analysis.
Mayor Alderman, it's a pleasure to be here. Appreciate your time this evening. So, I want to start by giving you a real brief history of Race Track Road. I went back and looked a little bit. Race Track Road showed up on state county road maps in 1936. Showed up as a graded road and it connected what's now News Boulevard, which was then US 70, to what's now Trent Road, which was then US 17. And then it stayed as a graded road for a good period of time. And in 1962 is when it showed up as a paved road. And at that time, US 70 was combined with NC 55 as the northern terminus of it. And it went and crossed US 17, which is now MLK, over to Trent Road. So, some changes have taken place. In February of, and so going well beyond, it was a state-maintained roadway. In February of 1986, the city of New Bern requested to get the speed limit reduced on that roadway to 35 miles per hour. So, there were local concerns about speed on that road. Race Track Road, I guess, was appropriately named for, for good reasons. And so, that was a concern. And I think that's important to note because, you know, that needs to be a consideration in our design and what we do here to make sure you maintain the intended speed and community feel that you have through those neighborhoods. Then in June 1995, that's when the city took over maintenance of Race Track Road. The state handed it over to you and it became a city road. Then in December of 2005, there was a traffic impact analysis done for the development of Derby Park Phase 6 and Flamingo Oaks. And one of the things that I think is significant about that in the comments back on the traffic impact analysis, DOT commented about a suggestion to convert Elizabeth Avenue to the through movement instead of Race Track Road being the through movement. And the comment made was that some significant vertical adjustment to Race Track Road would have to be done before you could make that change. If you've ridden through that intersection, you know, you drive up on Race Track Road, it's got a steep superelevation as you cross it and then you continue on Elizabeth Avenue. So, if that were ever to be made the through movement, you would have to make significant changes to that to, to change it. It was also, it could be done, obviously. It would extend the limits of this project to do that because that cross slope, the superelevation going around that curve extends back towards US 70 for a few hundred feet. So, you would have to extend that much further if you wanted to correct that with this project. As part of that, I looked at too, to see with the curvature of the roadway there and the cross slope, the superelevation of the roadway, it's actually meets a design for a 55 mile per hour speed. So, it's, it's designed to carry vehicles at a high rate of speed. Then in January 2014, that's when the Safe Routes to School project came along. They built some of the sidewalks along Elizabeth Avenue and along Race Track Road and the HJ McDonald quadrant there. So, that, that work has, has been done as well. So, moving on from that to the geotechnical evaluation. So, we had a geotechnical firm go out and they took some cores in the roadway, in the paved shoulder and in the shoulders of the road to say, what kind of condition is it in? And what they found was in the existing travel lanes, Kyle mentioned 22 feet. So, you've got 18 feet is what was the original roadway width out there. And then you've got two-foot paved shoulders on each side. Then, of course, you've got your grass shoulders. So, what they found was that in the existing roadway, there were three to five inches of asphalt. So, that surprised me. I thought there were going to be more with the roadway that had been paved that long. I expected that it would have been resurfaced more. But it only had three to five inches of asphalt. It had 14 to 18 inches of aggregate base course of stone under it. So, that's what's helped it to hold up as long as it has. Then in the paved shoulder, they were three and a quarter to five and a half inches of asphalt with no stone under it. So, what happened is they went out and widened it. They just dug a trench, put about five and a half inches or so. That was what was intended, I feel sure, five and a half inches of asphalt in there and widened it. And then, no stone was under that. And with the soils below, this is good news, it's mostly sandy soil. So, what we would expect to expose in any of our, any of the projects shown would be a sandy type material. So, we wouldn't expect a lot of the things you may have if you have poor soils and have to undercut material, haul it off, bring additional material back in. So, so that's a good indication from the geotechnical report. The geotechnical firm also made recommendations as to what kind of pavements would be needed for the widening. And a concern out there as well is the concrete plant. You're familiar with the concrete plant on site to make sure in that area, and the road's in pretty bad shape there where those concrete trucks are coming in and out. So, we have a different pavement design to accommodate the loads of those concrete trucks. So, the, the other thing is, if you walk that section of road, I walked the whole section and looked at where the pavement's failing. Some of it's in the paved shoulder, some of it's in the travel lane. So, we quantified that. And it's a pretty significant cost if you go out there and repair this roadway, that the amount of pavement repair that you've got to do. And I would recommend you do that, no matter what option you do. That needs to be done ahead of time because you don't want to put fresh new pavement on top of something that's failing. It, it won't, it will not last. I would also recommend the cross-line pipe that Kyle talked about. If, if the funding is available, that, that be done with any option because it'd be a shame to go out there and improve a section of roadway and then have a pipe that's undersized and have to go back and, and replace that at some point in the future. So, going through the options, getting more specific now.
Dwayne, do we have a, do we have an aerial or something that we can look at? It's so all over the place. I'm trying to visualize. I mean, I know where Race Track Road is and I've been out there, but it's really hard to visualize what, what you're trying to do.
There is one, I think it's in your handout that shows the project study area for the environmental report. Isn't that in the beginning?
Yeah, I see, but I didn't know something we had on the screen that we could make bigger.
I guess I can't show two things, though.
Okay.
So, so looking at the options, okay, proceed. So, looking at the options, the first option was to take the existing roadway and patch it, do what's needed to it, do some leveling on it to make it ride a little better and then resurface it on it. And that's what you see as option 1 there. And the total cost of that is, is in the range of $300,000. Now, that is from Elizabeth Avenue to the railroad tracks. And then one of the alternates Kyle talked about is the paving from there to News Boulevard that you make a decision whether you want to do that additional work or not. One of the benefits, I think, there, you know, you've got some good projects going on over at the old quarry where you're trying to encourage public activity. And so, you know, one consideration could be, how does this road provide a connection to those centers for recreation where you could encourage active transportation, people walking and biking to get to those areas as opposed to getting their car and driving there? So, so a consideration, I think, you know, as you consider the options and the alternates. So, that's option 1, pretty straightforward. Then option 1A is the widening two feet each side and, again, patching, resurfacing. The price tag on that comes out to about $730,000 roughly. And that, that's for the additional asphalt when you start the widening. And the patching is going to be similar in all of them. If you look through the estimates, it, it's all about the same. So, then option 1B, same type thing, but with a three-foot paved shoulder. The reason we wanted to look at that was your shoulder is somewhat constricted there. We weren't sure if we would be able to get in a two-foot or a three-foot paved shoulder. We are confident we can get the three-foot paved shoulder in. There's a couple of areas that are pretty tight. But what that does is provide you a total 28-foot pavement width, which gives you some good space to allow for the bicyclist on the shoulder of the road. One thing, and we'll go back to what I said earlier about speed limit, and I think this is important to be considered in this whole process. If you've put a nice wide road with nice smooth surface, then a driver's tendency is to drive faster. So, we need to look very closely at how we do that. And that can be by through lane widths and through other design standards to try, to try to keep people driving at a reasonable speed limit. So, one option that could be done there would be to take a 28-foot wide pavement, maintain 10-foot travel lanes instead of having wider lanes and have a wider shoulder. It just encourages, it makes motors feel a little more uncomfortable. May not be the best way, but that's essentially what you're doing. You, you restrict them a little bit so they don't drive at, at higher rates of speed. So, so that's a, a consideration there.
Excuse me, sir. So, what is the shoulder width currently?
Currently, the way it's marked is a two-foot paved shoulder. So, you've got nine-foot travel lanes right now and then two-foot paved shoulder on each side.
Okay, that's how, it's currently like that now?
That's correct. So, it's currently marked for nine-foot travel lanes and then you've got a two-foot paved shoulder. And that's based upon when the widening was done. All right, the next option is 1C, which includes the three-foot- All right, the next option is 1C, which includes the three-foot widening each side and puts the sidewalk on the, on the east side like Kyle had talked about. The price on this is about $1.5 million. The significant part when you start adding sidewalk to either side is the additional clearing and the grading that comes along with it. You just, you significantly expand the footprint of the roadway. So you've got to go and you've got to clear the trees and what's needed to be done there and then the additional earthwork, the grading that's got to be done now. As Kyle mentioned, there's not any significant utility impacts that we saw from these options. Probably the most significant will be to your electric with some poles that would be in conflict. Your water are in the current shoulder, so it's a question of are you comfortable with that water line possibly being under some pavement places? And if you're comfortable with that, you wouldn't have to move those water lines. Your four sanitary sewers are in the shoulder as well. And so we wouldn't be digging down, getting lower. They're, they're higher up. So they wouldn't be a problem because they're in the existing shoulder. And then your gravity sewer is off to the side, but it's deep enough that it did not appear that, that any of that would, would be significantly in conflict. All right, so 1C again, that's about 1.5 million and that's the sidewalk on one side. All right. Then 1D is your biggest footprint. That's got three-foot paved shoulders and five-foot sidewalk on both sides. So that's the, the biggest impact you would have. The, the cost of that is around 1.7 million, a little bit more than that to do that work. So that's 22-foot wide roadway with sidewalk on, on both sides.
What, quick question on the right-of-way acquisition cost. Do you have any estimates that you typically use for that?
Well, we did. We, we don't have it for this. We, we can get that if you want it, but we did not quantify the right-of-way impact.
So for, so for example, option 1D shows like 13,000 square foot acquisitions. So you've got a number that you can give us to say that's going to be about?
I, I wish it was that simple because what it is, is that's spread out over a number of properties. So we would have to look at the number of properties we'd be taking from and then compare that. So just to take that total number, we gave that as a general idea so you could see the extent of it. But we would have to look at specific parcels and what would be required there to, to give you a reasonable right-of-way estimate, I think.
And just to, just to clarify, that's not in the estimates?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not, that's right. So what's not in the estimate is any right-of-way cost or utility relocation cost. All right, so the next is option 2A, which is two 11-foot travel lanes and a five-foot shoulder or five-foot paved shoulder on one side. And that five-foot paved shoulder could act more like a bike lane. But it's just on one side. So the price for that is in the neighborhood of $1.35 million. So then option 2B is the same thing, but it adds the sidewalk on the same side. So you would have two 11-foot travel lanes, a five-foot paved shoulder, a five-foot sidewalk. And the price tag of that one is, is just under $1.6 million. And then the two alternates we talked about earlier, the first is the replacement of the pipe, the 36-inch pipe. Preliminary recommendations on, or preliminary hydraulic evaluation said that should be two 54-inch pipes. Now, I think it's possible they could be reduced a little bit when a detailed analysis is done on that. But bottom line is what you've got there is significantly undersized and so needs to be, be looked at for replacement. For replacement with two 54-inch RCPs and head walls on those, the estimated price on that's about $105,000.
Dwayne, you couldn't run that water down BSH to that creek behind Pine Crest and BSH that, I don't remember the size of that box called, but there's no way to run that water down that railroad right-of-way or the trestle and get it into that Pacosa area?
So some of it goes back in there and sits. You're talking about it'd be the, the west side?
Well, you know, the problem with what you're doing, he's already got a vortex anytime you have a rain event on News Boulevard, that undersized culvert under News Boulevard. So that's nice that you're going to put, get rid of the water, but still we've got that problem at News Boulevard. And it's even further impacted by the, the size of the culvert under the trestle. So you, you got, that's why I'm asking if there's any way you could divert some of that water back toward the box culvert under News Boulevard between BSH and Pine Crest. Could you invert that, get that water flowing back that way?
We haven't looked at that. I will tell you that anytime you divert drainage, it's a really big deal. You know, if, if you put additional water on somebody that didn't have it previously and there's any impacts, negative impact caused by that, you're kind of setting yourself up for some issues. So typically you do not send water a different way than it's historically gone. You keep it going that same direction. So, so that's the first alternate is for the pipe replacement. The second alternate, as Kyle had mentioned, is for resurfacing the section of roadway from News back to the railroad tracks, which is about $105,000. Okay, so those are the options that, that we reviewed. We did add in that seventh one that was the resurfacing only. So we'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Well, the only, only question I have, again, back to his Alderman Kinsey's problem at News Boulevard, is there any way to put some secondary board 18-inch lines or something underneath News Boulevard to get that water over? Said you've got some overflow options instead of having to totally take up News Boulevard with all the infrastructure in place to, you're, you're just going to be putting more water and he's already got a tremendous problem there. Washouts and everything else.
To make sure I'm clear on the location you're talking about. Are you talking about with the two 60-inch pipes come, go under News Boulevard?
Yes. Yeah. Alderman Kinsey.
Option three, right after 1A, without, could be any sidewalks in. Looking at cost, how much all this is going to cost to, to complete this project, looking at, I, I missed the number there, so I'm going right after 1A. It was the next one there, right at 1A.
So 1B was the one that had three-foot paved shoulders?
Yes. You said the cost there. That is the cost for that. I, I didn't catch that. Can you give me that number again, please?
It's right at some $185,000.
All right. And that's without doing any sidewalks at all?
That's great.
That's just eliminating the sidewalks?
That's great.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Montagnon, could, could you come up just a second and elaborate on what I asked earlier? You'd be more familiar with that sort of basin area as far as, you know, again, if we, if we improve his drainage on the west side, it's certainly going to impact, you know? And, you know, we've walked that whole distance. How you going to get that water out of News Boulevard?
Well, at the, at the grand scheme of it, at the end of the day, you're getting the same amount of water from the same amount of property. I think what you're doing is you're going to get water a little bit quicker because you're getting a bigger pipe. If, if you wanted to look into enlarging the pipes or adding pipes underneath News Boulevard, that's certainly something we'd have to work out and go through DOT to do that.
Wasn't that the pipe that had already separated?
There, there was some damages there after this last hurricane that we reported to the state that they did have to come do some repairs on, yes.
And they did?
They did fix it?
They did fix it.
They did.
Well, I got you here, man. Let me ask you, has anybody performed any traffic counts or analysis on Racetrack Road? Do we have any idea how many people are traveling on that road?
We have not. That's something, we certainly have the capability of doing, but at this point, we have not.
Wouldn't it be wise if we get some traffic counts before we decide as to what we need to do over there? Well, not only traffic counts, but future traffic counts. Sure, yeah. And it's going to probably be hard getting good traffic counts while school's out. And, you know, we probably need to wait till school comes back in so we can get good numbers.
Yeah, I agree with you about getting a traffic count, but that is a heavily trafficked area. I mean, that road is heavily traveled.
It's like a shortcut taken to come off. We don't have to turn onto Glen Burnie Road.
But I think if we knew the numbers of cars that were on it each day, it would help us decide which option to go with. Does that, does that make sense?
I think.
Now, you guys are the engineers.
I think the number of cars has a, a big play on the width of the road.
Mm-hmm, exactly. And the condition of the road. It's just like when you have a truck and a school bus or two school buses coming by, it's like they are just close together. So the road is so small.
And definitely needs to be widened. And also with the, the three-foot wide shoulder. So with that three-foot wide shoulder, that is just like a walkway for the children that's walking, that's traveling that highway?
Yeah, that's basically the, the area in between the white fog line and the grass.
Right. So, and I think that was an issue with the children traveling that, walking from school down that, down that road.
We probably should encourage kids not to walk down that road. We probably should encourage them to cross the road and get over into the Colony Estates where the sidewalks are and walk to school.
But there's no sidewalk.
A lot of them live in the apartment complexes.
See, right there where Colony Estate comes out to Racetrack Road, right? The sidewalk stops right there.
They run all the way from Racetrack Road through Colony Estates and they come out on Elizabeth Avenue at the crosswalk.
Right. So that's the route that the children are taking now, I'm assuming. They get on Racetrack Road and they get, and they go to, up to Colony Drive and use that sidewalk to go through to the school.
Some of them do. A lot of them come right down Elizabeth Avenue and start the walking from Elizabeth Avenue down Racetrack Road. Because a lot of the kids live anywhere from Elizabeth Avenue to Colony Drive. I want you to leave Colony Drive, you're in the street all the way up to the.
Right, because I went over and looked at the area. If you, if you, Colony Drive comes out to Racetrack Road, it stops. So if you take that sidewalk from Colony down to Elizabeth Avenue, you're giving the children that lives over in that area a sidewalk to walk on. Am I right? Because right now, if they walk down Racetrack Road, they're on the high, they're on the street, they're on the highway or road. Am I right?
The sidewalk stops on York.
No. This, I went over there and looked at it. The sidewalk, Colony Drive comes out and it, it stops right there at Racetrack Road. Coming out to Racetrack Road, it stops. So there is no sidewalk from Colony Drive up to Elizabeth Avenue for the kids to walk on.
Correct.
Isn't that correct? Right. So that's what I was looking at. But now Matt is telling me that, well, with what he just said, that the children are getting on the highway there at Colony Drive and going all the way through Colony Drive over to the school. Okay, so.
That's one thing, if, if we did the, we started, we're talking about the 10-foot, and not 11-foot, that's 20 feet. And to be quasi-compliant with DOT, not that we have to be, but I assume DOT's five feet for a multipurpose sidewalk. If you were to extend additional five feet, which would be 25 feet on the east side, and an understanding that you would kind of in place, probably pave over some existing, I don't remember what infrastructure you said that was.
Water, water lines.
Water lines. And, and understanding that the, the road from the railroad tracks to, well, portions of it, but I'm not the engineer, so I assume you're saying the whole road needs paving. Is there a ballpark? I mean, you've thrown quite a few scenarios here, but I'm trying to come in for landing as far as it'd certainly be nice for that area to tie into the Latitude sidewalks and figure out at late date how to get it on that News Boulevard and obviously get sidewalks all, all the way to the Rock Quarry eventually. Is there a ballpark number on, on that? Obviously, I, I assume you guys would be doing some light milling of that road, but obviously somebody's milled it before. If all you have is three to five inches of asphalt, as many years as that's been there, I assume it's probably evidently been milled in the past.
Mayor, if I can, I think if, if I'm following you, you're closely related to option 1B, where you're widening the road a couple of feet for the vehicular traffic and you're adding sidewalks on one side between Latitude Church and Elizabeth Avenue. So that's, that's option 1B. Excuse me. Yes, I'm sorry. That's option 1C. And the estimate on that is one point, by the time you do everything involved in it, it's 1.5 million dollars. And then when you do the engineering and the geotechnics, about 1.6.
1.6. And so you have like a 4:1 slope with what's left and then that would impact folks that are presently parking on the right-of-way and the driveways, they would lose some driveways, is that correct?
On the east side, they lose, on the east side, they lose a little bit more, but yes, on the west side, they would lose, you're basically about three feet.
And that's with putting in a sidewalk?
Putting a sidewalk on one side, which is Colony Estate, Colony Estate side, Latitude Church side.
In your proposal, again, we don't have the specifics of it, but are you talking about what would be the width of the sidewalk?
It would be ADA compliant, it'd have to be five feet wide.
And it would be concrete?
Yes, sir.
Was there any savings in just like in some areas like Bridges Street and Morgue and just pouring a, an asphalt sidewalk?
It's probably a little cheaper, I haven't ran the numbers on it.
There, there's two factors that weigh into that decision, whether you want to have pedestrian traffic co-mingled with, you know, your vehicular traffic in a way. I know in most situations in DOT design now, DOT requires a certain separation between edge of asphalt and the sidewalk or multi-use path if there is no curbing. If there's curbing, then they would allow a sidewalk within, what is it, two feet guys? I think you have a little grass strip there, but if there's no, no curbing, typically it's about, I don't know, five to 10 at least in separation. I can't remember what the number is, but. The other thing I just wanted to make sure and point out is, you know, if, if we're being consistent with whatever plans have been adopted in the past, in the bike and pedestrian plan that was adopted back in, Jeff, I don't know what year, 2007, this particular corridor does call for sidewalk.
Well, okay, so, but you're talking about putting a, a concrete sidewalk in that would be flush, level with the asphalt road, road bed. You're not talking about curb and gutter at that price?
No, sir.
Okay, so when you do that, to me, if you don't have a demarcation between the two, with some of the heavy equipment that goes down that road, I think if you pour a concrete sidewalk, I think you'll be tearing some of it out eventually. I think you'd have a whole lot more maintenance on a concrete one than you would on an asphalt one, which is probably a little more forgiving.
And the only thing I will note to that is there would be a, we've got it drawn at five and a half feet or four and a half feet, so four and a half to five feet of grass strip in between the asphalt and.
How much?
Four and a half to five feet.
So you'd have the road bed, well, actually the fog line, four and a half feet of grass and then the sidewalk?
You'd have the fog line, you'd have a three-foot paved shoulder, then you'd have four and a half feet of grass, and then you'd have the five-foot sidewalk.
And that's pretty, that's pretty consistent with projects of new, or I guess new construction where you have multi-use pedestrian and vehicular traffic with no curbing. The curbing is kind of a, a separation point to where it creates a difference in the distance from the edge of the asphalt to the edge of the sidewalk.
And that's what Latitude Church has right now?
Latitude.
Latitude Church has it on their own property.
They actually put it on their own.
They're on the backside of the ditch.
So how far is that from the street then?
Latitude's?
Yes.
It's probably 20 feet from the street.
Oh, okay.
That we were talking about.
So I, I still say we should spend a little time in getting a traffic count before we decide which option. I'm surprised that we haven't had any traffic counts for this discussion that's been going on.
I'm surprised that we haven't had any traffic counts for this discussion that's been going on.
So why don't we look at the traffic count, see what the traffic count is, come back to this here and visit it again.
Just, just a comment on traffic count. Typically, when you get traffic counts, you're looking at your intersection. It, it's primarily for vehicles. So I determine if I've got a lot of left turns at an intersection, a lot of right turns. So I need, I need to add a left turn lane or a right turn lane. The other thing a traffic count would be used for would be in my pavement design. The geotechnical firm, uh, because I, I looked way back and tried to find counts on Race Track Road and there were none, um, available. So the geotechnical firm assumed a number and assumed a certain amount of truck traffic and gave us a pavement design based on that. I'm comfortable with the pavement design they've given, especially based on what's out there and the performance of the existing pavement. So I don't, I don't feel like I need a traffic count for my pavement design. So then the other thing you would need it for would be to look at if you're going to make any modifications at intersections for vehicles. So you, you can certainly do that if you choose to. I, I don't really see the, the, any significant benefit for this project that it's going to provide.
So you don't recommend that then, is what you're saying?
I don't, I mean, it's pretty easy to do. You can go out there and a day, and you know, you're right about what you said earlier. Right now is a tough time to make a traffic count. It's not going to be representative of what you've got long-term when things get back going like the.
So the number of cars that's traveling up and down wouldn't have a factor on how wide you would make that road?
Not, I think, in this urban type setting. You're not going to make it, um, wide. I mean, what, what we've got proposed here, eleven foot travel lanes and three foot paved shoulders, I, I don't think you're going to, want to make it wider than that.
I don't think the travel lane, I think what he's trying to say and what you're searching for here, and, and I agree with what he's saying. Um, and my background is highway engineering. The, the volume of traffic in this particular setting is nowhere close to getting to the capacity that would require you to look at additional lanes. The width of the asphalt is really more about the comfort of two cars passing one another. That's really all it is. I mean, DOT gets away with it with eighteen foot farm roads. They're, they're country roads, they're paved, they're out in the middle of nowhere. They, because you don't have a lot of traffic on them. That's, that, they, they're just trying to limit their, their cost and their exposure and their maintenance for future years and years and years. Typically, ten to eleven foot lanes are typically what you're dealing with in most pavement settings. Until you reach a point where you're dealing with interstate highways, then they'll go a little bit wider, something like that. But mo, in most cases, the width of the travel lane per se is not necessarily taken into account until you get into major, major volumes of interstate traffic.
Matt, what did we put on Old Airport Road, just so I'll have a visual? Is it, were they eleven foot travel lanes?
Uh, Old Airport Road had twelve foot travel lanes from Taverna to Carolina Kellers. And then they also had the five foot bike lanes.
Yes, sir.
Two comments, um, Alderman Astor, I'm going to speak for you, so if I speak incorrectly, just stop me. You're, you're offering that a traffic count from an engineering and design perspective would bring little to no value. From Alderman Astor and our perspective, a traffic count will help us from a political standpoint to determine whether this is a wise investment of taxpayers' dollars down this particular road. So I think we're looking at two different reasons to request a traffic count, because we obviously have to justify the spend that we do. My, my next point, probably last point would be, I think we need to decide what is the issue along Race Track Road? Is it simply the condition that needs to be fixed? Is it primarily the traffic widths like we had on Old Airport Road with the two buses crossing each other? Or is it pedestrian? Or is it all of the above? You've got to figure out what the issue is to figure out which option I want to go with. To me, I, I never like looking at a list of cost to figure out what we're going to do. You've got to figure out what the problem is and which one of these is going to address the problem. And I think that's what we as a board need to figure out. And to me, the traffic counts would help with that because it would determine, do we want to invest in the pedestrian aspect of the road? Or do we want to invest in wider lanes? It may come back that the pedestrian, and I can tell you, nothing frustrates me more than to, to ride down a road with a sidewalk and see somebody walking on the road, on the shoulder, on the opposite side of the road. So we've got to determine, is it a wise investment to put sidewalks? Or should we invest that money in widening the lanes to make it a more safe from a vehicular standpoint?
To answer part of your question, it's, it's, uh, all three.
Okay.
Well, I feel that it's more two, that is the widening of the road and the passing of traffic.
And folks walking, so it's all three.
But I don't, I really don't see a lot of folks walking down in that area.
Only the kids, it's mainly the kids after doing the school.
I received one phone call from a, you know, a citizen that lives in that area, just questioning the matter. And their comment was either do it, do it all and do it right, or don't just do something to placate, to say I did something in this neighborhood. So they were saying, do it. If you're going to do it, do it and make it right, or don't just do something to say you did something. So I think it's important that we look at all.
Jeff, um, has there been any movement with the connectivity of the Derby Park with Craven Thirty? I know there was talk about.
No.
No, nothing on that front?
No.
Because that would certainly impact the traffic in the intersection as well if that were to happen.
Is there a possibility though, that we should take that into consideration? Just like the Banix, do you plan for the future or?
They, they have, well, you're talking about a thirty-year build-out probably on, or I, I say that thirty, maybe, maybe less. Depends on the market, obviously, but it's a large piece of property, a large build-out. And this is at the very back of the property. So if they make a connection at some point, um, and I think there's complications with the connection of tying the property that they don't necessarily own. And it's not right of way, is that correct? About.
The ordinance would require an extension of that existing scope, uh, as well as Craven Thirty. And so there is requirements, the ordinance for those two to connect. We've had conversations with both owners over the past several years and we haven't been able to really come together, so to speak, as to where that connection is and when.
You could create a nightmare driving all that traffic through those residential neighborhoods.
And that's the truth.
Ask Matt, I call him almost daily and the chief, I call him almost daily about the, the, the traffic and.
So, and not moving, and moving forward with this project here, um, it's going to be a while before, uh, to get a traffic count because no one knows when school is going to take in. So, um, the road is still, uh, having issues there and it's, it's deteriorating. And so, um, what can we do now to move forward?
Which option are you looking at?
Well, I, I just want to go back again. I'm, I'm going to have to rethink what I thought our overall future bike path, pedestrian traffic design was. Um, you know, there's no perfect scenario out there to get somebody from downtown New Bern all the way out to Race Track Road by way of a sidewalk. The only possible economic means of doing that was on Trent Road, we decided to go from four lanes down to essentially two lanes by taking a, after we paved Trent Road, we, we took a portion of, we put bike paths on it. Now that's right there, no demarcation. It, it's right next door to whatever those lanes are now. They're probably fourteen feet apiece plus the bike paths. Uh, I know that we had looked at on Glen Burnie Road, it, we were a foot short from, from designating when DOT paid, we were going, that was a four feet and I think it needed to be five feet. And we as a board and as a staff, I think we're, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think we were pretty much okay with that being very similar to Trent Road. I'm just trying to get as much sidewalk and bike paths as I can in the city of Dubin for, for the amount of scarcity of money we have. And, um, again, that's why, you know, in this whole engineering scenario, in the five feet of, uh, grass area in between that and eleven or ten feet width for, per lane, that it just seems like it, it got mighty expensive from what I thought originally. That was going to be very similar to Trent Road and maybe would be eventually with Glen Burnie that, and, and, you know, I'd like to see it all the way, Oaks Road, all the way up to National Avenue. But I guess that's not the staff's idea of where we need to go as a city. And so I guess I'm going to have to back off, um, currently, Mr. Montane, I know you've got a very questionable look on your face. So you want to ask me some questions on that or the board or? I think we're all over the map here as elected officials, uh, giving you direction on what we want. If you're telling me that something is not compliant with ADA or other, um, pedestrian plans, et cetera, I'll accept that. But we certainly did it on Trent Road and I thought that was a more economic, economical means of trying to, to address the, the, um, safety factor of the Race Track Road, particularly the apartments, trying to get the children to age stay in the garden. So it tied in to R. McKenzie's, um, sidewalk program he did with Safe Roads, you know, he did that earlier. So what am I missing here or do I need to just take that chill pill?
No, the, the only thing I'll add to that is, is the cost factor with Trent Road. Trent Road, we already had the existing wide road that we were able to resurface and restripe. So there wasn't the cost of widening the road or adding the, to get the bike lanes. We already had the width there when we started that. So that, that's probably the only thing I can speak to as far as the cost factor of the difference of doing Trent Road versus doing Race Track Road.
Well, but you're obviously, uh, you're not going to make a lot of homeowners happy when you go there and bring this right into the front yard, I'll tell you that.
I agree.
For as much happiness as this is going to bring, it'll be some people not going to be happy if you, if you do that sloping design I s, I saw there earlier. Uh, how much, is that sixty-foot right away?
I believe it is.
So how much additional land are you going to need to do that design that you have in mind? Couple of feet or what? Are you going to have to acquire a right way? I know you discussed that earlier.
Yeah, you, you would either have to acquire a right away or acquire a permanent easement. And, and the amount of additional would depend upon the location. You know, just if, if you've got property that's, uh, close to the same elevation, the roadway's not going to go back as far. When you've got properties that got less lower, when your ditch slope, the way it would go back is go back further impact. So the impact to, to properties would, would vary based on location and just the layout of the land.
So I'd like to make a motion that we start off with, uh, one C.
One C?
That sidewalk.
I've got option one, option one B, and option one D. And I know y'all talking about the C, but I, I don't have a shield on. Paul McKenzie, where, where is that? You're looking at that green.
Are you, you, you talking about the twenty-two foot road, roadway with sidewalk on one side?
Yes, the sidewalk is on one side.
The money is listed on this page.
Uh, option one C is a twenty-foot, twenty-two foot road, two eleven foot lanes, three foot paved shoulders on each side, and a five foot sidewalk on the east side.
On east side?
On the east side.
On east side.
Yes, sir.
But the funding of it isn't on our funding page. Doesn't say one C you'd have.
Yes, one C is directly under the word option.
And how much money is that that R. McKenzie was made mention of?
Uh, the construction and design added together is one point, one million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
And is there any contingency on that, are you pretty safe on those figures?
I think they're all soft costs at this time. I mean, until we, till we did product and design and bid out, that is, that is a estimate at this point.
Was that, was that cost including ops, alternative one and alternative?
It does not include alternative one.
Does that include this?
It does not.
So that's a hundred and five thousand.
That's correct.
And it doesn't include the seventy-six hundred dollars worth of right-of-way acquisition that we don't have any idea how much.
That's correct.
So we don't have any, no numbers on the rest of that, just what I just.
On the right-of-way acquisition, no, and the utility relocation, no.
And I just got a, I typically don't do this, but I just received a text from someone who was out there that says, please don't put a sidewalk five feet from my, my front door or back door, or from my house, they're saying.
Matt, let me ask you something. Um, so the three foot wide, um, paved shoulder, can, is that what would be used as the bike lane or the bike lane has to be put in additionally?
Um, the three foot, it's not wide enough to be technically called a bike lane, but it's wide enough that bicycles would ride on it.
Okay.
Currently, currently, one of the biggest issues, I spent a lot of time out there in last week. One of the biggest issues I've seen out there is the width of the road. Twenty-two foot wide with a two foot paved shoulders and mailboxes right up against the engine right of way. Anytime the vehicles, when they're driving, are driving right on the fog line. And every time a bicycle is riding down that street, every time they come out to a mailbox, they've got to kind of swerve out around the mailbox because there's not enough width right there and they're into the land of traffic.
Well, I think when we were out at your Pub Works office talking about this, I, I kind of thought add two feet on one side, three feet on the other side, add a foot of width, which would give you about ten and that would leave you three feet for, you know, a shoulder for whatever universal use somebody might want to do with it. And that in no way, um, involved, uh, the owners probably as long as they're having to lose additional frontage.
And, and Mayor, to that point, option, which is, I think what you're looking at there is, is option one B, which is adding a two foot shoulder to each side. And that would not require any acquisition of property.
That's what I would want to go with.
Okay, so, uh, uh, change my motion.
What was that, Matt? Which one?
I'm, I'm sorry, option one A or one B.
Right.
One, option one B is a three foot shoulder on each side with no sidewalks and would require no property acquisition.
So then, what was the dollar figure on that? Would that be about one point?
Eight, eight hundred and ten thousand.
What could you shift if you added three feet? Shift the median over to the west side and then that would give you three or four feet of extra lane of, and, and keep both of them at ten feet. And then that way, it, it really actually doesn't even cover up the water lines and stuff. And it obviously does not affect, impact the property owners along there.
I'm not sure, can you repeat that?
But we discussed this a little bit down in, in the, um, Old Airport Road. And instead of having, I think, instead of having three foot on each side, why can't you put six foot on one side? Or it's four foot or five foot on one side and one foot on the other side?
Shift the median over.
Yeah.
Add the two feet that way.
You can certainly do that. The disadvantage of that is if you get bicycle traffic or somebody walking, you're going to encourage them to actually ride on the wrong side of the street.
Yeah, you're right. It's against the law for them to ride, they have to ride with the traffic, correct?
So what you're saying, Matt, the best one is to go with is, uh, one A, a one B.
I, I don't want to say what the best option is, but what I'm hearing from you guys, sounds like that's the option you're, you're kind of leaning towards.
Therefore, we won't, uh, encroach on no one's front yard.
Correct.
And that's what we're looking to afford.
Um, case in one item, if you're on a five foot wide sidewalk, be it asphalt, be it next to the road, be it five feet wide, if you're on five feet of concrete or asphalt, and, and, you know, most cities like New Bern just can't afford to put on both sides of the road, is that a violation for somebody to ride a bicycle on that designated five foot? Because again, back to Glen Burnie Road, we were looking at that being a universal bicycle lane. I mean, would, would somebody be violating the law to?
I'm looking at the chief.
To, um, travel on that sidewalk in the wrong direction?
Chief.
My understanding is it has to be coded that you can't ride on a sidewalk. So in other words, you can ride on a sidewalk in certain areas of the city.
Either direction?
Yeah.
There you go.
So Matt, let me, um, ask you a question. Option one A, and that's with two foot wide paved shoulder. So what you're, what we're actually be doing is widening the road from eighteen, which is currently now eighteen foot?
From twenty-two to twenty-six.
Oh, it's currently twenty-two.
Twenty-two to twenty-six.
So what is it currently?
Uh, currently it's twenty-two. You got nine foot lanes and two foot shoulders.
Okay. So you'd be, okay.
So.
So you can go from twenty-two to twenty-six or twenty-two to twenty-eight. That's the difference between one B and one C.
With the two foot wide shoulder. And, and that's seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
What's the minimum amount of shoulder you have to have if you have a ten foot lane? How much shoulder do you have to have? About a foot or two foot?
You don't have to have any, there's not a minimum.
Okay. Well, I would, uh. Well, I would, I would add two feet on one side, three feet on the other, get a five-foot universal sidewalk, and it would be adjacent to the paved road, the lanes would be 10 feet each, and you'd get your cost where we can do some more of it somewhere else, because there's a lot of other areas of New Bern that want the same thing.
But did you say sidewalk?
I mean, Everett would love to have it, and other areas would love to have these sidewalks, and certainly, again, workforce development, everything else, getting our citizens out walking and being healthy, you know, we have to spend our money wisely to where we can get the most people walking, particularly up to that workforce development and that community college.
I wanna ask Chief Summers a question, just for clarification. You said it was legal for them to travel, I'm talking about a bicyclist, now I'm talking about not a, a five-foot lane that's separate from the road, I'm talking about, I'm talking about five-foot this, this beside the road and connected to the road.
If it's connected to the road, you have to travel with the traffic.
Okay.
If it's apart from the road, then I think any...
So, if it's, if it's sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk, where there's a four-and-a-half foot of grass between it and the road, you can travel either way?
Correct.
But if it's connected to the road, then you have to travel with the traffic, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's gotta be at least five feet forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so, like I said, I'll change my motion, no sidewalks, just widen the highway.
Which option are you speaking on?
1A, I think it is, 1A or 1B, I think they're pretty much almost the same. I think one road, one extension is maybe a little wider than the other one, is that correct?
That's correct, one's 28, 28 feet wide, one's 26. And I think to the Mayor's point, if you went with the 28-foot option, you could kinda slice it any way you want, you could do two 10-foot lanes, and two four-foot paved shoulders, or two 11-foot lanes and three-foot paved shoulders.
I'm not seeing 28, which one are you referring to as 28?
Option 1B.
1B.
Okay.
And the 1B is a 28?
It says 22 on mine.
Plus three-foot paved shoulders on each side, so that's 22 plus 6.
Now, and that is... Am I looking at the right one, when it says a total of 783,000, 945 for 1B?
The 1B, the, the construction cost is 785,000, total cost of the engineering and geotechnical work is 810,000.
So, that is my motion.
Clarity, is it Option 1A or 1B, your motion?
1B, 'cause that's the, that's the biggest, that's the largest one.
So, let me ask you another question, Matt, because with the 1B, that 810,000, you're not gonna need Alternative 1 and 2 included in that project?
I would recommend the culvert increase. I think the board could make the decision on whether they wanted to resurface from the Railroad Tracks News Boulevard. At this point, I think what you would be doing is authorizing us to move forward, to get a project together, to get it out to bid, we'd still have to come back to this board before we awarded the project.
So, we're really just starting the process with this?
That's correct.
Could come back and be twice as much, we may have to.
Yeah, it could come back and be twice as much, and you say not do it, it could come back and be half as much, and you decide to do more.
Did you, what was your motion?
Well, at this point, you said, we're gonna, we're giving you direction, we need to pick one of these options, correct? And then later on, we can come back with any, whatever is, is at that point in time, if there's additional costs, or, I mean, what is needed at that time, we can come back and we can change it.
Yeah, we're just looking for direction on how to move forward, if we move forward, and which way we move forward. Like I said, the only thing we'd be doing is doing the design, getting a project out to bid, and then we'd be coming back to this board with actual costs before we move forward.
So, what was your motion again, Arvin Kinsey?
1B, ma'am.
So, you wanna move forward with the option?
Yes, I wanna move forward with Option 1B.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, and a second is there to discuss?
Mayor?
Yes?
Matt, do you have, I'll put you on the spot, do you have the street survey, the citywide street survey, that would show where Race Track Road would fall on that priority?
I don't, and I don't think we owned Race Track Road at the time of the street survey.
Okay.
When did you say the city took over?
2060, 2060.
I think it's, it was, I think it was, change 1990. They said it was, because that was the first acquisition, whenever we did the bridge.
Right, we took over when the bridge, and for some reason, I think that was, we did the survey before that, so it would not be included.
The city took over, maybe, I'm pretty sure, but the city only owned the portion of Race Track Road that was past HJ McDonald until we sold the, or we traded with DOT the bridge for the roads within the city limits. So, that was just literally five years ago, four years ago, I guess, whenever we got all those, all those roads.
So, it's possible it could have fallen on them.
It's possible, I've seen something that it wasn't.
So, it's possible that if it were to be surveyed, it could have been high on the list based off of the condition of the road, based on the boring samples that it would need to be addressed anyway.
It could be.
Okay, we're, again, if there's any questions or anything, we have a motion, a second, we're fixing to do a roll call. Mr. Montane, what is your total figure on Arvin Kinsey's motion?
Just for the sidewalks and the design fees, is 810,000, but at this point, we wouldn't be spending that, we'd just be doing the design and the bidding portion.
What is your anticipated estimate on Arvin Kinsey's motion?
We could do it this budget year, or we, or we could do it, get it out to bid and budget for it, get some estimates and budget for it in the next budget.
Mayor, I think what the point here is, is that I think if the motion is to move forward with Option B, which is the width of the road, as Matt indicated, this would need to come back before the board, Option B has a pre-construction cost plus the base bid cost of 810,000. What we can do is bid that with the add alternates for the contractor to bid on the add alternate 1, alternate 2, because it's gonna have to come before the board for approval anyways. This is a large-scale project, there's no right away acquisition, which is great, but that, that would be, my recommendation is, if, if Mr. Kinsey's made the motion, it's been seconded, you're voting on an 810,000 potential expenditure, expenditure with an add alternate of up to 215 more thousand dollars, depending on if the bids come in good. It could be that this bid comes in at 650,000, and you got 200,000 add alternates, and it still is 850,000, which is only 40,000 more than the original budget, then to me, I'd go ahead and get all that other stuff done while I'm doing it, but that's, that's just my thoughts.
And when would the staff report back to the board?
As soon as we can get to go to the bid package and send it out.
I just talked to Duane, probably in the next 90 days, we can probably have something done, bid it out.
Okay. Anything else before we do roll call? Let's have roll call starting with Alderman Vingle.
Alderman Vingle?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yep.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Stevens, go ahead, what else we got tonight?
Mayor, the only option that we have on here is new business, if the board wishes to bring up anything, and/or if the board wishes to direct us on the previous financial stuff, if we wanna move forward with anything else. Obviously, you just now are looking at a new project that could potentially be 800,000, so that was obviously not budgeted for, but, you know, we're, we're interested in hearing from the board and any kind of direction the board, we can, we can stand put where we are and, and say, you know, great, glad that you were conservative this year, we're happy to see where the numbers coming in, and we wanna wade a little further, we're happy to just take the direction of the board at this point.
The only thing I didn't hear tonight that I would have liked to her to hear, and maybe we can for future reference, we've talked many times about a bond, and the potential...
We can give you that information.
A potential of taking all of these projects that we need and saying, okay, this is what it would take, and this is how you would do it.
What are your questions?
Well, I, I just wanna know, I mean, you've laid out all these projects, there's obviously a need, we're talking about sidewalks, we're talking about all these other things that we really need to do, would we be better off to lump it all together and do a 10, 15, 20 million dollar bond, and do what we need to do in one fell swoop?
I think you would, I think you would be wasting your time if you are doing anything less than probably a six or eight million dollars, or something like that. If you're doing anything more than that, then you probably should consider a bond. You can do a bonds, both from a general obligation bond, which my, my thoughts are, that's completely up to the board, as far as that goes, my thoughts are that, you know, that puts you to the, the decisions of the public, because you're putting it out to vote. You also have limited obligation bonds, which you can do, where you can go out and get this interest financing, and we certainly can have a bond council come down and brief, we've actually talked about doing that anyways, is have them come down and explain this process. It's not something that this city has used frequently, but it's processes that cities across the state of North Carolina use all the time.
I know.
I think it's a great opportunity for you to, to take advantage of low interests, I think it's a great opportunity for you to take advantage of large-scale projects lumped together and done all at one time, very similar to, in nature with what we did with revenue bonds, we did AMI, we did water projects, sewer projects, we lumped all of that in together and did some, some major, major projects with our revenue bonds, so it's very similar to that. So, it, it's really the, the pulse of the board, you know, to me, it would be a very easy decision if y'all would've said, hey, go with, you know, 6.5 million dollar City Hall Annex project, we wanna go with a 1.5 million dollar project here, we got 32 million dollars worth of ditch work to do, even though that's gonna get reimbursed, I mean, all, there's lots of different options, and I'm sure Mary can add that, but we can have a bond council come down and provide a ton of, of information that would be invaluable to this board in making financial decisions with personal finances.
I would like, I would like that to happen, because I just wanna know what all the options are, just as, as a form of reference for us in moving forward. I think there are many things that over the years the city has not been able to do, or not in the financial position, or didn't have the resources that we may have now, and we need to look at all the possibilities, because each of us could probably cite something throughout our awards and throughout the city that is in need of repair, replacement, or whatever, and we should look at what our options are to, to make those changes.
And I, several years back, just to kinda give you an example, you know, we, we had toyed some of the, the previous board members that were on that board, may remember, we had toyed with the idea of a bond at that point to do Martin Marietta recreational improvements, a fire station, maybe two fire stations, depending on the need and the growth that was going on at that time, the large-scale drainage projects and re-ensurfacesing projects that we were doing, so there are a lot of things that we were looking at, and that's kinda where you wanna, wanna look at. I know Mary's done bonds with Holly Springs, where she came from, the areas around Raleigh are growing so fast, they're having to do transportation improvements on a regular basis, they do bonds with, to do transportation improvements. It, it happens regularly, Greenville, several years ago, they did a large bond just for stormwater projects, improvements throughout their entire city to fix stormwater-related issues, so it's definitely a very, it's a very good tool to have in your toolbox, in other words.
Add it to the list? I'd like to have that session.
We will, I'll have Mary, Mary can reach out to the, the bond council that she's familiar, works with, if there's really any in order.
I think the first thing that the board would need to know is what items could be approved, I don't know if LDC gets involved in that, but obviously, the wish list has its limits according to what is allowed, so you would probably need, it'd be nice to just send us that information.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, Mayor, it, it really boils down to, I don't wanna waste this gentleman's time that would come down and talk if the board's not interested in, number one, if, if it's gonna be, hey, Mark, you go and absorb all of this into the budget this next year, and you go out and do 20 million dollars worth of work, and expect me to find, you know, 2 million dollars a year, or a million dollars a year, or whatever that payment's gonna be, then as long as you're willing to accept that, i.e. pretty much cutting a bunch of stuff out of the budget and any kind of additional requests from operations staff, or the alternative to that, we got to find revenue sources for it, and that could either be through the growth of the city, or that could be through the growth of, of revenues through sales tax, or ad valour taxes, or whatever, so if we're not willing to think about and take those drastic measures, then, then obviously, bonds would be something you shouldn't even consider.
Anything else come for the board at this time?
Yeah, I have a question for the city manager. Mark, at what point in time are we gonna be ready to go out for naming rights for Amphitheater at Martin Marietta?
Mr. Hughes, you wanna come up? I know he's been doing a lot, him and his staff have been doing a tremendous amount of work in opening that up, matter of fact, I think it's now opened and moved the fence back, so I'll let you go.
That's right, that's right, so we've opened the main gate at Martin Marietta Park, we, we've opened up two parking lots, we've got restrooms open, ADA canoe kayak launch open, shelters open, so the crew right now is, is working on moving, you know, for years and years, we stored concrete and asphalt in a certain area over there, so the crews have been working for the past several weeks on moving that out of the way, and that's where we're getting ready to put a larger shelter where the swim beach will be, and also put a playground, so they're working on that now, and we anticipate that opening up within the next few months as well. But, we have been working on naming rights information, so we should be bringing that to the board very soon to let you see that, and yes, we will be going after the amphitheater and several other things very soon.
Great. Project God love to see happen.
Does the board have any other questions, concerns at this time?
Mayor like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion second to adjourn, I don't pay the much to say aye. Aye, I oppose the same, the motion carries, and we're adjourned.